Let's call the July 1st regular city council meeting to order. The pledge of allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So... Do we have a close session report?
Mayor, would you like roll call?
Oh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruin?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here. Any close session report?
We have no close session report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And for... We have one ceremonial items to recognize the Parks and Rec Recreation Month, which is July. And so we don't have recipient. We have a proclamation that the state clerk will hand to the Parks and Rec Department. As you may know, summer is one of the busiest and most exciting time of our Parks and Rec Department. Throughout the season, our dedicated staff and volunteers and community partners work hard to offer camps, classes, and events for residents of all ages. And we really owe them to... They take a lot of time. They take time in the evenings and on weekends to offer a lot of classes. So they are from cooling off at the Blackberry Farms and enjoying picnic... Excuse me. Picnic to exploring nature at McLaren Ranch Reserve. We are especially proud of events like summer concert series, movies in the park. And of course, this year, we are bringing back the Fourth of July celebration, complete with pancake breakfast by the Optimist Club, and flag racing, and children's parade, and the live concert in the morning. And in the evening, we have fireworks at height. You can observe from multiple sites in Cupertino. Check the city website for more information. We would like to acknowledge the staff worked really hard to bring this back to Cupertino, and the council funded this extra effort. So we hope that we can all enjoy. And this year especially, we also are piloting a dine out for the Fourth. There is restaurant promotion from Fourth, Fifth to Seventh. So you can check out the city website for those. Some restaurants and food business are offering promotions. And therefore, please join me in recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month here in Cupertino, and in celebrating the incredible efforts of our Parks and Recreation staff. Thank you, Director Rachel Sanders. Yeah. Okay, then we have a presentation from MidPen Regional Open Space District by the Board President Jed Sire. And how do you say that?
Sounds like the store with no S on the end. Seer.
Seer. Oh, Seer. Jed Seer.
Tess? Here we go.
Hi, welcome. And Craig Gleason, Ward One Director. Thank you for coming to the city.
Okay. I'll be really brief. I'm the current president of the board for MidPeninsula Regional Open Space District, and I represent Sunnyvale, most of it, not all. So my ward runs from 280 to 101, and from Lawrence Expressway to Mary. So there's a section at the south end of my district, my ward, which is Cupertino. So I get a little bit of Cupertino and kind of the heart of Sunnyvale. So with that brief introduction, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Mr. Gleason, who does represent a whole lot more Cupertino than I do.
Thank you very much, and thanks for this opportunity here. Go to the next slide, please. Okay. So MidPen's mission, we can capture it in these five words on the right: preserve, protect, restore, educate, and enjoy. And that represents the creation of this protected greenbelt, as well as providing access to people to these spaces. On the coast side as well, our mission is extended to include agriculture with... Where it's in concert with the protection of grassland biodiversity. Next slide, please. So MidPen has 27 open space preserves that span from Highway 92 in the north all the way down to the edge of Santa Cruz County. And we share also lots of boundaries with state and county parks and other open spaces, which provides this great swath of protected lands up and down the peninsula. Next slide, please. As Jed talked a little bit about the wards, MidPen has divided up into seven wards of roughly equal population. And each one is represented by a director who's elected by the constituents of that ward. So Jed's is Ward Three, as he mentioned, primarily in Sunnyvale. I'm from Ward One, which is the southern area, from Cupertino down through Saratoga, Manizeno, Los Catos, and all the way down to the edge of Santa Cruz County there. Jed mentioned the divisions of the wards. So we tend to use major roads as boundaries, which results in some overlap across the municipalities. And actually, we have four directors that have a piece of Cupertino that they represent. Next slide, please. So MidPen is an independent special district. It's a public agency that's funded by a slice of property tax. The district has over three-quarters of a million constituents, and those 27 preserves cover 72,000 acres of protected land. They provide over 250 miles of public trails. The preserves are open every day of the year, and parking and access is always free. We have a main office in Los Altos, and we have three field offices: one in Campbell, one at Rancho San Antonio, and one up on the Skyline Ridge. The district has about 240 employees now, and we work with a volunteer force of over 1,000 people each year. And then in 2014, the voters approved Measure AA, which is a bond measure that funds a set of 25 high-priority project portfolios in habitat protection, restoration, and public access. And those are all across the district, and they were prioritized based on public input. Next slide, please. So I'll go into a few project updates now. This particular picture shows the San Francisco Garter Snake, which is an endangered species. And MidPen and its partners are working to protect species like this all over the district. Some of the largest populations of this particular snake are on MidPen lands. Next slide, please. So as you know, fire is a critical concern in our area, and we keep seeing reminders of how important it is to steward the lands to limit the intensity and the spread of fires. MidPen's Wildland Fire Resiliency Program is managed in partnership with CAL FIRE, with local fire districts, state and county parks, and other organizations to make sure that we're applying the right approaches and techniques at scale across municipal and district boundaries. The program includes mapping and monitoring components, which are shared with partners. And the primary work that you'll see in the open space is vegetation management, particularly the creation of shaded fuel breaks. And then increasingly, we're seeing prescribed fire as a tool. So this picture shows a prescribed burn that we did at Cherry Springs in Sierra Azul, southeast of Los Catos last year. And we're planning a larger burn for that same area this year. Next slide, please. So some of the components in this program are heavily technology-based. We are using GIS-based algorithms to prioritize project areas, and primarily based on these two high-level goals: the ecosystem resiliency and the fire management for safety. Next slide, please. This slide talks to the Los Catos Creek Watershed Collaborative. And this is a partnership between MidPen, San Jose Water, Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council, and the Santa Clara County Parks. It takes a holistic view of forest health and fire resiliency across the whole Los Catos Creek watershed. It's funded partly through CAL FIRE's Forest Health Program. And around Lexington Reservoir and up to the skyline, you can see many examples of fire resiliency work and forest health projects, particularly understory thinning, which aims to remove fuel that could cause fires to climb up higher in the canopy. The map here shows the project, or the process of the project, and areas that are targeted for upcoming work. Next slide, please. So that's one big example of the fire resiliency work that's been doing, that we've been doing. But the work also extends across the district, as you can see here, with many, many different areas targeted. Next slide, please. So for years, MidPen has had partnerships with local nonprofits. But in the last few years, we really sought to formalize these relationships, and we've developed this tiered system, which involves increasing levels of support as relationships mature with these agencies. So here, we're showing the organizations we're currently working with to promote educational and outdoor access opportunities for the local communities that these different nonprofits serve. The pilot tier is a starting point that enables the nonprofit to fund an event on MidPen lands and helps us identify which partnerships have potential for growth and to serve new constituents. Tier Two provides between $5,000 and $20,000 for multiple events, and includes a formal contract and goals with the nonprofit. And then Tier Three involves a multi-year commitment with mutual opportunities for content creation, speaking engagement, and other things. And these programs with groups like Latino Outdoors and Bay Area Older Adults have really helped MidPen serve a broader and more diverse community. Next slide, please. We have a really exciting set of projects coming up around Highway 17 at the north end of Lexington Reservoir, including a major wildlife undercrossing, which is intended to address a really difficult spot on Highway 17, where there's a very high mortality rate for mountain lions and other species. The crossing will provide a key link to help preserve genetic diversity for mountain lions in the Santa Cruz Mountains, as well as farther east. At the same time, another set of projects in the same area is planning to make the Bay Area Ridge Trail continuous through that space. So coming from Sierra Azul across Highway 17 to El Cereno, and then down to Sanborn Park. These projects are being done in coordination with VTA, who will lead the construction for the highway crossings. And the project is partly funded by Measure AA. We're also pursuing a host of other fundraising opportunities. And on this set of projects, we hope to begin construction around 2027. Next slide, please. So there are lots of ways to get involved at MidPen, and we have a bunch of docent-led activities: hikes, bike rides, and otherwise. And those take place every week. We also have a lot of volunteer activities, such as land stewardship and trail maintenance. And you can see all of these events at openspace.org/events. So please feel free to sign up. I particularly like going to both of these types of projects and events. I learn a huge amount from the docents. Next slide, please. Okay, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate this opportunity to update you, and we'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Just want to thank the council personally for the opportunity to present to you.
Thank you very much for coming to the council, and then for all your service at the Open Space Reserve. And that's very important. So I don't think we usually take public comments on presentation. And if any council member have a short comment or question... Yeah, we usually don't do extensive question and answer for presentation. But I really appreciate your coming over. And yeah, I think people can reach out to you later.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just to note, anyone wishing to provide comments on this item may do so under oral communications.
Oh, yeah, so you can comment under oral communication, yeah. Okay, now we have postponements and orders of the day. So I'll... We will postpone item... I think it's item...
It's item 10, Mayor?
10, is it?
Item 10, yes.
The SB 360. Item 10, yeah. So we would postpone item 10 because this... The bill is... Has become a trailer bill, so we will have to decide what to do later, okay? And then may I have a motion on that?
Motion to postpone.
I would second it.
Okay, then let's vote.
Mayor, do you want to clarify the direction for postponing this?
So it's postponing without a date as certain, yeah. Because this has turned the trailer bill, so it might come back with a different recommendation, yeah. Okay. Shall I vote?
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Next, it's oral communication. So city clerk, would you give the instruction?
Yes, Mayor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-heard basis, with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may, however, briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. Anyone wishing to provide comments on this item, please have your request submitted in the next nine minutes. Mayor, I currently have nine requests to speak from in Community Hall. That... And I currently see no requests virtually, so that 27 minutes is the estimate.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will start with Bianca Guerrero, followed by Chris Satterly, followed by Carol Satterly. Bianca, you have a group request, so if I... If all members in your group would please come to the podium and stand alongside you, that would be great. So you have five in your group, so you may speak for up to 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, video would you...
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bianca Guerrero, and I'm here on behalf of our growing and diverse community of players to express serious concerns about the direction proposed in a recent email we received from the mayor regarding noise complaints at the pickleball courts. We fully understand and respect the need to address neighborhood concerns about noise. However, the current proposal, which calls for imposing strict curfew hours and requiring players to switch to expensive quiet paddles in the middle of the evening, places an unreasonable burden on the community members, who are simply trying to stay active and healthy. This approach is neither equitable nor practical. Asking pickleball players to bear the full weight of the noise issue is similar to asking drivers on a noisy freeway to only drive electric cars or bicycles during certain hours, instead of installing a sound barrier to protect the nearby homes. It's unfairly penalizes... This unfairness penalizes one group instead of addressing the root of the problem with a long-term solution. For over a year, our club has consistently offered to assist the city, both financially and logistically, with the purchase and installation of a sound wall or acoustic panels at the courts. Despite these repeated offers, we have not seen any serious consideration of this collaborative and cost-effective solution. A sound wall will serve the dual purpose of mitigating noise while allowing continued access to a healthy, inclusive recreational activity enjoyed by citizens of all ages. Given that you care about public health and community well-being, we urge you to reconsider the current proposal and work with us to implement a solution that serves the needs of everyone. We remain ready and willing to partner with the city on the installation of a sound barrier, and welcome the opportunity to be part of a constructive conversation on this issue. Thank you so much for your attention and for the continued support to the Cupertino pickleball community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca.
I think many people probably would come here for a similar topic. I think the city manager has an update to clarify her proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. I did prepare a short update on this. So I just wanted to say to all of the community members who are here today, and those of you who have emailed council and emailed me on this topic, I appreciate your engagement and your commitment. So I want to start with that. But I also want to clarify something. So the city's plan that outlined the multi-step approach, but only talks about implementing Step One, which would be installing the sound attenuating material on the fence, and requesting players to observe quiet hours and consider utilizing quiet equipment. That signage will be added, but the clarification here is it's not a requirement, it's a request. We are hoping that this will be, you know, something that the pickleball players would consider, and that it's important to the neighbors as well. So again, we're not limiting the hours of pickleball. We're not requiring anybody. But it is a request that we ask that pickleballers during those times are mindful of. There is a link to the official quiet equipment that's available online that we'll include on the signage, if you are inclined to look at those. So this is also, I just want to mention, is a compromise in the kind of the direct response to our own ordinance that we have in place for the noise... The Cupertino noise ordinance, which would limit a lot more. So we don't want to enforce that right now. So this is a request. Signage will say clearly it's a request. And the fence, hopefully, when we have that material, will help. So again, thank you so much for being here and for writing to me, and we appreciate everybody in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, city manager. So next person?
Next, we have Anup Singal, and it looks like you have a group. Deana Newman. Horef. Megan. Barbara Charity. So there are five of you, so you may speak up to 10 minutes.
Okay. So I'm Anup Singal. I've been a resident of Cupertino for the past 20 years. Thanks for your update, but I'm not going to pass up a time to speak. I'm sorry. I have my intro here, so it has to happen. So we have already actually worked to minimize the parking hassles, which were outlined, and our members actively talk to everyone who's parking on that road to move their car. So we are already there. And we support installing the plastic sound barriers, as you guys have outlined. Now about the timing. I know you guys are saying it's a request. I put up the signs for the 8:00 AM quiet time, and once I leave there around 7:00 AM, and talk to the players there. Some of them gracious enough to say, "Okay, they'll come after 8:00." But I distinctly remember one guy said, "It's not the law, so he'll continue playing the way he is." Okay, so even if it's a request, I know that one person explicitly said, "If it's not the law, he's not going to follow," okay? And first of all, I understand nobody wants pickleballers dinking around your window at 7:00 AM. But 8:00 AM for me is a fair time. By the time most people are up, caffeinated, shouting at the TV, reading the newspapers, or getting ready for office. And 9:00 AM, as you made the request of, is too late. The sun is already frying us at 9:00 AM today. And more importantly, one of our Monday breakfast sponsors is backing out as 9:00 AM being too late. So I'll rather have a requirement of 8:00 AM to make sure that everybody complies than a request of 9:00 AM. As for the evening, let us maintain the current policy of 9:00 PM timeout, okay? No request, nothing there. I remember the pre-mopid area. You guys are familiar with COVID. But recently, I came across this term "moped," which is the mobile-produced indolence disease. It is a tragic condition where children stop playing outside and became Wi-Fi-powered furniture. Back then, evenings were gloriously noisy: laughter, yelling, nerf wars, the whole yarn yards. It was a beautiful chaos. Evening time is exactly that. Young professionals decompressing over a few games of pickleball after office. And so I suggest that we remove that, even a request of 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And as far as, yes, you have already said that just the first part is a mandatory, everything else is a request. But I'm going to just say that one of the steps even considered, about $150,000 spent on the ice volume, I think it will just lead to lots of studies, lots of discussions, and are unnecessary. There was also a talk about quiet time all day. I know that's not there, but it's the way out there. And I would say that maybe advocates of this solution should consider a nice cabin in the woods instead of trying to live in the middle of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Evan Yap, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Emily Donna, and group. Evan?
Yep.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Evan. I play pickleball in the evenings here in Memorial Park in Cupertino. I don't play in the mornings, but I heard the suggestions, all that stuff. I do want to bring up a point, is that it brought to my attention that the lights were turned... So they used to turn off at 10:00 PM, then they got reduced to 9:00 PM. And actually, there was an initiative. Someone told me that from the club that they actually reached out to suggest a 9:00 PM. And the response was, "We're not going to turn off the lights at 9:00 PM right now, just because we don't want to limit tennis players." Lo and behold, noise complaints came by, and the lights got turned down anyways. So point being is that the club is clearly trying to show initiative, that they are foreseeing problems, they're trying to be collaborative here. Noise complaints... Noise complaints, I feel as though, I don't speak for the whole community, but personally I would say, if you have the money to live here and you chose to live next to a park and it's getting popular with pickleball, you have the money to soundproof your house, all right? I will find you contractors if you need that. I can do it for you. I know people. All right? But the thing is, to ask the community to quiet down and to buy these, you know, paddles that are quieter, it's really beyond me, and that's why we're here today mainly, to express our very vocal concern that we're, I don't think this is a long-term solution, and it will be a long-term problem. As people have mentioned, the sun is coming out already by those times, like 9:00 AM or something like that, and it's quite dangerous to be out there. You know, if you're not well hydrated, you got sunscreen on everything, that's why people play earlier, and then they wait until the evenings to play. Yeah, there has to be better measures than simply listening to a noise complaint and asking the community, can you go ahead and buy these, you know, paddles that, by the way, aren't cheap, they're 170. There's a sale going on right now, but that's besides the point. Yeah, so that's my take on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Emily Dana, followed by Mark Fantazi. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. I'll just do a shout out for Mid Penn and Post. Wonderful work. A lot of the parks that we have now are due to them, and I, believe me, having going over 17 twice a week, getting stuck by Lexington, I will be glad to have, share the road with mountain lions and people walking, and I do hope in the middle of all that, they kind of fix the road too, because it's pretty scary in there sometimes. Anyway, hi, I wanted to talk tonight about some of our housing bills and political drama that's been happening the last couple of days. I'm going to start out and talk about SB 79, which is from Senator Weiner, and this bill is going to the Assembly, one of the first committees, on July 2nd, which is tomorrow. I am a member of Local California, our neighborhood voices and catalyst for local control. We've been studying this bill for three to four months now, and it is a really, really difficult bill. It keeps getting rewritten, they have put words in about bus groups that don't even exist. I have personal feelings about this bill. This is the one that's trying to take a half mile down any transit corridor and bus line, and Stevens Creek Boulevard will fall under this because it's any bus that's 15 minutes or more. I believe that the main goal of this is not housing. They want to take control of the corridors along the transit and bus lines to put in high-voltage transmission lines to attach to the data centers. Now, that's a big step, okay? Well, I came to this conclusion after studying this bill and other things that had happened for the last couple of months, but about three weeks ago, there was a epiphany. And 79 is going to have no, I mean, there's no SEQA for this, there's no local control, and people, I'm not against AI, but they need the transmission lines to bring them into the data centers. We had a small drama, I'm going to call it, with the trailer bells, two SEQA trailer bells, that wound up having our governor do something that was extraordinary and very strange, where he put the two trailer bells in our state budget, down to the wire in the last two days. I spoke to Senator Laird's office, who is my mother's senator in Santa Cruz, he did a vote of no record. It's not housing, it's AI. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Emily Dana and group. Doug Gore, Susan Lee, Jerry Cullen, Shen Lee. Then, next we have Nick, Mark Fantazi, and Rota Frye. Welcome, Emily.
Good evening, dear city council and city staff. My name is Emily Dana, and I'm one of the several hundreds of pickleball players at Cupertino Memorial Park. I am speaking today to protest the plan shared by Mayor Chow to mitigate pickleball noise, specifically the requirement, or should I say now the request, for players to buy quiet paddles and balls and use them before 9:00 AM and after 7:00 PM. First, I want to express my dismay about the process in which such a plan was shared out of the blue and considered to be implemented without consultation of the pickleball community, without hearing residents' complaints about noise as part of the public record, without an opportunity for public input and debate at a dedicated city meeting, without a vote of the city council and/or Parks and Rec Commission. This is not transparent, this is not democratic. I received this afternoon Tina Capos's email that quiet equipment was, after all, not a requirement, just a request, but that in the future, pickleball may prohibited, may be prohibited altogether during certain hours if not quiet enough. Do you realize how much damage you are doing to the pickleball community with such immature communication and such flip-flops? Just this week, as one of the previous speakers already mentioned, one of the pillars of our community, who has been organizing weekly park clocks for the past year, has decided to stop playing at Memorial Park because she doesn't feel welcome by the city. Now, I want to share my opposition on the content of the plan. First, mandating the use of quiet equipment is a non-starter, even requesting it is a non-starter. Quiet equipment is expensive and changes the quality of play, which is why many players refuse to play with such inferior equipment. In addition, it's not even effective. It does not make the ball noise totally go away, and it does not address other sources of noise, such as players talking and having fun. Second, the proposed curfew before 9:00 AM and after 7:00 PM is extraordinarily restrictive. It is more restrictive than the current noise ordinance. Why do you propose more punitive hours for pickleball, a very wholesome and activity that is beneficial to a lot of the community than other noisier activities such as leaf blowers and construction? Third, this plan is not practical because it has no provision for enforcement, and this flip-flop that you just did, moving this from a requirement to a request, just shows that. How many players do you think are going to freely adopt inferior and expensive equipment? Is the city staff going to police each and every player on the court to make sure they use the quote-unquote "right" paddles and balls? Finally, I want to end on a constructive note. The pickleball community wants to be good neighbors and good citizens. We understand the homeowner's desire for peace and quiet. We want to share our pickleball knowledge to come up with thoughtful solutions that work for all. There are many avenues for compromise. For example, it is an excellent idea to install soundproofing material on the fence next to Christianson Drive. Let's start with that and assess the results in three months. Beyond that, instead of imposing an ill-conceived plan without consultation, I urge the city to organize a mediation between neighbors and representatives of the pickleball club. Let's listen to each other and come up with creative solutions together. That's something I have learned on the pickleball court. By connecting with each other and building an inclusive community, we can all live less stressful and more joyful lives. Please consider the pickleball community as a resource rather than a liability. Pickleball has changed the lives of hundreds of pickleball residents, sorry, of Cupertino residents, with improved physical and mental health and new friendships. I hope we can continue with your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Next, we have Mark Fantazi, followed by Rota Frye, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening, I'm Mark Fantazi. I live on Lindavista Drive. My wife and I have been there for over 42 years. On January 22nd, I came before the city council and asked that the city conduct an independent investigation to assess whether the conditions of notification were proper and if there were outside influences involved in the rezoning of the Aviage property. I read that the city did conduct an investigation into the conduct of Pamela Wu before her firing. However, it's disappointing that the residents of Cupertino will never know what she did because of the agreement to destroy any findings from the investigation. Cupertino residents should understand that this confirmed what many of us suspected in that she did not act in good faith for the city she was supposed to manage for the benefit of the residents. There's still the question regarding proper notification and outside influence in handling of the rezoning of Aviage Court. Recently, we received written notifications from the city regarding a hearing on the change in fire zones affecting areas of Cupertino. I thank the city council for acting properly and providing written notification. It still begs the question why the previous city council allowed virtually no notification for something as significant as rezoning. The state is engaged in a concerted effort to restrict property owners' rights and restrict engagement by neighborhoods affected by these zoning changes. SB 330 is an example, and now we are learning that SB 607 is being pushed through by some backdoor shenanigans. SB 607 will gut our ability to challenge projects through the SEQA process. Ironically, it was the misuse of SEQA that got us into this mess. SEQA was originally supposed to be used for public works projects. Over time, it was abused by environmental groups, stopping well-thought-out developments. The high cost of housing in California is due to progressive policies that drastically increase the cost of living and the cost of doing business. The truth is, the high cost of housing is a result of policies and onerous regulations that drive up the cost of everything. On top of that, we are having to deal with groups like YIMBY, forcing cities to ignore their own zoning laws and notification process through lawfare. Looking on the YIMBY's website, they claim they are for equitable distribution of housing. This is simply a neo-Marxist term, meaning property rights do not belong to the individual, but belong to the state. According to their website, YIMBY is actively engaged in promoting legislation that circumvents property rights in existing zoning laws. It's well-funded, and it seems to have the ability to fund lawfare. I think it's time that the city and other groups investigate where this money is coming from, and I urge them to conduct the Department of Justice.
Thank you, Mark, that is your time. Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. You might have seen me bending the ear of the folks at Mid Penn with whom I am great friends. Mid Penn has been great, they are protecting our land particularly from the issues relating to Lehigh, and I gave them a brain dump on what's going on with Lehigh, and of course, I hope that we do, we continue to do that. You'll be hearing more from me, but Mid Penn is a friend as far as that's concerned. I would like to address some of the things that the previous speaker spoke about, and I've been talking about this here at council for many, many years, and that's WUWE, the Wildland Urban Interface. So this is, you know, and here we are, it is front and center, fire safety, and so we really need to look at not just protecting any residents who, residents who might have high-density housing in these WUWE zones, but it's not just them, it's the people next to them, and it's the people next to the people who are next to them, right? So we need to really consider the fire safety, and I think that that really does trump affordable housing. Which brings me to building. Now, we keep on, we continue to be losing our zoning to issues going on in the state legislature, and one of them is on the agenda today regarding AB 306. Somehow, the state legislature has decided that they understand building science better than the building scientists do, and so we need to have our building officials, people who know buildings, set the building codes. We should not have the legislature denying them, and I do appreciate Mayor Chow's stance on that, so thank you very much. And of course, you know what I'm going to talk about now, it's the terrorist apartments, okay? So that's first and foremost. I want you to do everything you possibly can to protect our land, our property, from being purchased by the, by the college district. One thing that's come to mind is that we have a situation of taxation without representation here. Why? So we've got all these people who, we've got people who voted on these bonds ostensibly, but how do we use them? We can't have other cities say how our land in our city is to be used. We are losing, we're going to be losing out about $700 per month, per unit, on that site in property taxes. You know, that would be the case if, you know, the ends of college, they're already not paying taxes. But if we lose out on that taxes, then who's paying for the services that they would be getting? It's us. So this is taxation without representation, but also urge you to look at the number 34 of the state constitution. Please read my letter, got a whole bunch of other things in there, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rota. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Chris Satterley, followed by Carol Satterley.
Hi, this is Quick. I just wanted to comment that I think it's important that when agenda items are postponed from one meeting to the next or beyond the next, when they do come on the agenda again, I believe that they should be closer to the beginning of the agenda so that the delay is not longer or it doesn't create an issue, which has happened very recently, that one item has been postponed twice, and it's now on the consent item, which would make it good, but I believe that that item may be pulled from consent, and I just think that in general, anything that's been pushed along, pushed along, should be toward the beginning of the meeting, and if it is to be pulled from consent, that it shouldn't wait till the end of the meeting and then risk being postponed again because you do now have a time limit. That's it.
Thank you, Lisa. And next, we have Chris Satterley, followed by Carol Satterley. I apologize, I skipped over you two. Welcome.
My name is Chris Satterley, and my wife is Carol Satterley. We have been Cupertino residents for 32 years. Last year, we signed up for beginning pickleball classes at the Cupertino Sports Center. The first words out of our instructor Peter's mouth were, "Pickleball will change your life." I rolled my eyes. We barely had time for everything in our lives already. The idea that this sport with a goofy name that mostly old people play would even fit into our schedule was laughable. Peter was right, so right. We started playing at Memorial Park and immediately were embraced by the most amazing community of people of all ages, ethnicities, economic status, athletic abilities, and more. We soon had hundreds of new friends. Between games, we learn about each other's families, work, happy news, and heartbreaks. What ties us together is pickleball, but it is so much more than the game on the court. As Cupertino homeowners ourselves, we certainly understand the need to address our fellow residents' noise concerns. However, that simply must not jeopardize our vibrant community of over 1,000 pickleball players. Fortunately, it's not an either-or proposition, if it is done correctly. The proposed plan has a high risk of fragmenting our beloved community and failing to satisfy the neighbors. The request to use quiet pickleball equipment has several flaws. First, it addresses the sound generated by the paddles and balls only and does nothing to reduce the sound of people's voices. It is unrealistic to expect people playing an exciting game not to express their joys and frustrations verbally. Second, the game is altered by this equipment in a way that is unacceptable to more competitive players who are an essential part of our community. And third, it costs the players money, which means we would lose some who cannot afford to buy two versions of paddles and balls. I believe that the best course of action is to add the sound panels immediately without any requirement for quiet equipment, and then start making plans for the sound wall, which is the only solution sure to solve the problem to everyone's satisfaction. Spending $150,000 on the sound wall is a great investment. Memorial Park has the reputation of being the most friendly and best-organized place to play pickleball in the area. People from nearby cities come to play pickleball and spend their money at our local businesses. Please fund this project immediately. We would also like to raise the possibility of crowdfunding if the city feels it cannot afford the entire cost. Thank you. Carol doesn't need to speak now because I got it there in time.
No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And we did have one individual with their hand raised, and they lowered their hand virtually, so Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Just to clarify, maybe some people didn't know why all of a sudden the pickleball community came out. The interim city manager made a proposal of her plan, and then I thought we should be transparent about our plan. That's why I looked up all the emails of everyone who have ever emailed me, and I sent all of you on that plan. Please be patient with the staff. I think they will listen to you and try to find the best solution, and it will be, we really have a great community. I think together we will find a better option for all of us. So thank the city manager for taking the initiative to come up with a plan, because we did get the request to adopt an ordinance to just require soft balls or paddle, and I didn't think that's a good solution. That's why I think the manager is trying to propose a compromise. Thank you. So then we go to the consent agenda. We have two items pulled, item eight, the Finch property, and the City Hall, and item eight and nine. So we do have a very full agenda, so I think although, so yeah, we will pull item eight and nine, and that will come after the action calendar. So do we, um, wait, do I need a motion to pull the item, or I just need a motion to approve the rest of the items?
Per the council procedures manual, once an item is removed from the consent calendar for discussion, it automatically moves to after the action calendar?
So I don't need a motion to pull, right?
You do not.
So now I just need a motion, oh, I need a public comment on the rest of the items that are not pulled?
Yes, please.
So, but I don't need a motion to pull?
No, council members may remove items.
Okay. Anyone would like to pull any other items? So it's only eight and nine, then we will hear public comment on the remaining items?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The only request that I would make is that we hear the item on Finch immediately after item 12?
Should we maybe, if we want to hear that earlier, maybe we do it before action calendar, after the two public hearing item?
That's fine.
Yeah? Okay, but we need a motion on that reordering, right?
Yes, Mayor, I would request a motion.
Okay, so would you like to make that motion?
Okay, so you're asking it to be after the two public hearings?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I would move that we hear item, I believe it's eight.
Three, two, seven.
It's eight.
It's eight, okay. That we move item eight to after the public hearing.
So after item 13, before item 14?
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Yes, we have public comments too, but yeah.
Yeah. So we vote on that. Then we will hear public comment on the remaining items, items three to seven and 11.
The motion carries with more abstaining. Mayor, may I clarify for a member of the public asking when item eight Finch property has been moved? It has been moved after the public hearing, item 13. Thank you. So I see one hand raised for the remaining consent calendar items. San R, welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. Before I speak on this consent calendar agenda items, I wish to say I had my hand raised for oral comments, but I was not called on, and my hand was lowered by staff, and so I would like to request you to see if you would entertain public oral comments on items not on agenda, since I did have my hand raised for the entire period.
Okay, so well, and so you are allowed three minutes for public comment, and then you want, still want three minutes for consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. I will use my time for oral comments, and if my clock can be reset to three minutes, please.
So Mayor, you're reopening the oral communications portion of the meeting?
Um, yeah. Can, am I allowed to do that? Yeah, okay, so it's reset.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your attention to procedural details. I did have my hand raised, and my hand was lowered by someone else, so I do want to point that out. Coming back quickly to the oral comments that I did intend to make, I would like to ask for council to provide very tight oversight on staff on the procedures used for community outreach. We have projects like Active Transportation Plan that have spent an enormous amount of energy in putting signboards all across the city, and I'd like to know how much money was spent on that, who put those boards, was that staff that put those boards, or was that community members putting it on behalf of staff? And we need to understand exactly how that effort happened and who authorized it. Likewise, for any staff effort that involves projects having to do with bike lanes, we have outreach that is out of the norm. We have banners that are put up on Stevens Creek Boulevard that clearly get the attention of all of Cupertino residents that have to drive on Stevens Creek Boulevard. My question to you is, why did staff not do this for the housing element? We have had numerous hearings from residents on the lack of notification on Avila Court, on the lack of notification on Mr. Heights, on the Builders' Empathy Projects, on the McLean Road Project, we could go on and on and on. If staff can spend all of this time doing outreach on ATP of all the things and on putting banners on Stevens Creek for bike workshops, why was this not done for the housing element? And why is this still not being done? Because they could be doing this right now for objective design standards, they could be doing this for public hearings for Westport, public hearings for Staples, and we could go on and on. In fact, every major agenda item could be a banner on Stevens Creek Boulevard and Deans Boulevard. Why are we not doing that? Instead, we see the outreach in a manner that does not make sense. It defies logic. Likewise, I see this notification that went out to the pickleball community, which is great. However, why is a notification sent to the pickleball community and not to all of the residents that live around all of the parks in Cupertino? I wish to bring to your attention that even though there are courts in other parks that are not authorized for pickleball, people have started playing pickleball on those courts. And once a precedent is set, the noise becomes a baseline factor, and then people ask to authorize that because there is already existing use. And because this is in the evenings, code enforcement cannot take those calls, and so when we call West Valley Patrol, West Valley Patrol is refusing to show up for pickleball calls. Now, the city is clearly out of control. Part of the issue here is lack of strong oversight of staff.
Thank you, San. That is your time. And I see one additional hand is raised from a member of the public. However, if you do not have this, you may only speak under the consent calendar. The mayor reopened the oral communications portion of the hearing because the previous caller had their hand raised before the nine-minute cutoff. Mayor?
Yeah. So any other speaker?
Were you reopening it for new speaking?
No, no. Just any other speaker for the consent calendar items?
Okay, so now we're moving to consent?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we close the public hearing again, yeah?
Okay, so anyone wishing to comment on items three through seven?
And 11.
And number 11. Please submit your request now. We have Devender ready. Welcome, Devender.
Yeah, hi. I'm not sure, joined just now. I'm calling regarding the McLean Terrace apartment recently.
So Devender, this speaking, the public comment period that is open currently is, must be related to those items on the consent calendar regarding items three through seven or number 11. McQuillan Terrace is not related to those items. Do you have, do you wish to comment on any of the items on the consent calendar?
Uh, no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I see no requests to speak for the remaining consent calendar items.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move items three through seven and 11.
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we go to public hearing. The first item is a public hearing to consider development permit, use permit tentative map, architecture and site approval, trim removal permit to consider the construction of 59-unit town home condo development. This is for the state, what do we call the Staples Pisa Hut site. Oh, so that's not really mentioned in the title, yeah? Okay, great. So we have a staff presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have our CDD team, and we also have the--
We have developer--
Developer here as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
And should we declare any extra party communication?
Yes.
So I have met with Summer Hill Homes, I think, three times on the project, and they, thank you for meeting with me and then share how you have modified the project throughout to address the concerns that you have heard. Thank you. So council member Mohan?
I too have met with applicants a few times.
And Vice Mayor Moore and the council member for it.
Okay. So I've met with the developer last week and a few months ago about this project and also some of the other projects that you have in the plans.
And I've also met with the applicant at least three times, including last week.
Same here. I've met with the applicant three times.
Okay, yeah. And thank you for making the time to also meet with the neighborhood community, yeah? Okay, now Steph?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Moore, or sorry, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore and council members. Emmy Su Yama, planning staff, here today to discuss a request by Summer Hill Homes for a housing development project. The property is located off of Stevens Creek Boulevard in the heart of the city's specific plan area, and it's adjacent to the Crossroads Shopping Center. When the application was originally submitted, the property was zoned PCG res or planned general commercial and residential. The site currently has three commercial buildings, including two vacant restaurants and Staples. In January of 2024, the applicant submitted a preliminary application under Senate Bill 330 or SB 330, which vested some of the standards that were in place at that time. And then later in 2024, the city adopted its sixth-cycle housing element, which included this property as a priority housing site. However, because an SB 330 application was submitted prior to that adoption, the standards from that update are not included in this review. The project makes use of a number of different state housing laws, including the Housing Accountability Act, which limits the city's ability to deny or condition a project, and additionally, it stipulates that the city cannot apply non-objective standards to any housing development project. SB 330, otherwise known as the Housing Crisis Act, streamlines the permitting process, and as noted before, it also locks in or vests certain fees and standards that are in place at the time of an application's being submitted. The project also makes use of the Density Bonus Law, which allows for additional units, waivers, concessions, and reduced parking standards. However, in this case, the applicant is only making use of the allowed waivers and concessions. And then finally, the city is subject to the requirements of the No Net Loss Law, or Senate Bill 166, which requires that the city maintain a list of housing sites that can accommodate the required arena. As noted in the staff report, the city has found that there is adequate surplus of anticipated units to accommodate this project. The project consists of 59 town homestyle condominium units spread across eight buildings with 12 below-market-rate or BMR units and 47 market-rate units. There is a mix of three- and four-story structures with units ranging from approximately 1,800 square feet to 2,700 square feet. A two-car garage is provided for each unit, and additional parking is provided for guests on-site, and the project also includes a central outdoor open space for residents. To accommodate the project, 45 existing development trees will be removed and replaced with 71 trees on-site. Off-site trees, including an adjacent oak tree, will not be removed as part of this project. Finally, the project also includes a vesting tentative map for condominium purposes. Here you can see two renderings of the project, one shown of a view from Stevens Creek Boulevard and the other showing view from the common outdoor space. The project has been found to be consistent with the applicable objective standards of the city's general plan, the heart-of-the-city specific plan, the BMR housing manual, as well as the municipal code. The project includes a request for a use permit to allow for residential uses on a mixed-use zone property and a request for two density bonus concessions to waive the requirement for a commercial component to be incorporated into the project. I'll note that under State Density Bonus Law, concessions and waivers can only be denied under specific circumstances, including that they have an adverse impact on historic property, health, or safety. In addition to these two concessions, the applicant is also requesting 10 density bonus waivers. For each of these waivers, the applicant has indicated that imposing the standards could potentially result in the elimination of units, reduced floor area, or a substantial change to the project design. The first of the 10 waivers is to allow for the modification of the required 45-foot height limit to allow for a 45-foot 10-inch and 45-foot 8-inch building, as shown here. The second is to allow for a modification to the required 35-foot front setback to allow for a 26-foot front setback. The third is to allow for the modification of the required 18-foot side setbacks to allow for 15- and 16-foot side setbacks, as shown at the locations here. The fourth waiver is to modify the required rear setback to allow for an approximately 32-foot setback, where a 56-foot setback is typically required. Similarly, the applicant is also requesting to waive the requirement for a second and third-story building to be terraced along the rear property line, which would result in a similar rear setback requirement. The sixth waiver is to allow for service access to be taken off of Stevens Creek Boulevard rather than being routed through the adjacent property into the rear of the property, which is typically required. The seventh waiver is to allow for the reduction of a 6-foot clearance for private open space. The applicant, in this circumstance, is requesting that the smallest dimension be 4 and 1/2 The applicant is also requesting to waive the required requirement for an additional planting strip along the parking area. This would conflict with their proposed pedestrian walkway along that same parking area. And finally, the two last waivers would be to allow for an increase in the total lot coverage of 3% and to modify the required parking space size from 10 feet by 20 feet to 9 feet 10 inches by 18 feet. While this is not required as part of the planning entitlement process, the project will be required to provide public art and parkland dedication or in lufies following their project approval. At this time, the applicant is proposing to provide a public art plaza in the northeastern corner of the property. And additionally, based on the site characteristics, staff is recommending and the applicant has also requested to pay parkland in lufies. The project was also reviewed against the city's BMR requirements, and staff has found that the BMR units are generally comparable in size and height to the market-rate units, with the BMR units being approximately 2,100 square feet on average and the market-rate units being approximately 2,300 square feet on average. The project was found to be qualifying for the Class 32 categorical exemption under SEQA. In the analysis for this exemption, the city's third-party consultant reviewed the environmental reports that are listed here, and they also found that there were no significant impacts on the environment. Among the reports that were reviewed was a transportation analysis, which included both a VMT and LOS analysis, and the conditions that are recommended in the environmental site assessment for management of soils during construction have been included as well. At their June 10 meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend that your city council approve this project. The discussion of the commissioners and members of the public consisted of questions related to traffic, tree removals, loss of retail, a lack of low-income housing, some stamped concrete, rear building setbacks, and public outreach. And with that, we recommend that your city council adopt the resolutions to find the project exempt from SEQA, make the required findings of no net loss, and approve the project permits. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, do we, any questions from the council, or maybe we hear from the applicant first? Okay, so, welcome.
Emmy's pulling up a presentation. Good evening, Mayor Chow and city council-
To clarify, so the limit is 10 minutes, right?
Yes, Mayor, the applicant.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and city councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Austin Lin, Development Manager for Summer Hill Homes. I'm joined tonight by Steve Bull, Vice President of Development, Kevin Ibrahimey, our Senior Vice President of Development, and members of our design team. For those of you unfamiliar with Summer Hill, we're a local residential developer based in San Ramon. Since 1976, we've built more than 7,000 homes in the Bay Area. We pride ourselves on the quality of our homes and the communities that we build. This project is especially meaningful to me on a personal level, as I grew up in Cupertino, and it's always great to be back to the city, home to the best food in the South Bay. Before I begin, I'd like to say thank you to city staff for working with us on this project, in particular, Emmy Sugiyama. Emmy has been a pleasure to work with. In addition, we are deeply grateful for the invaluable support provided by Pugash and Luke Conley. Next slide, please. As Emmy explained, we're proposing to build 59 new townhome-style condominiums at 20840 Stevens Creek Boulevard in compliance with the general plan and zoning designation for the site. The city council designated the site as a housing inventory site in the current housing element with the goal of encouraging the site to be redeveloped for residential use. We've worked collaboratively with city staff to design a project that adheres to Cupertino's objective development standards and that was sensitive to the residential neighbors south of the project. Additionally, our plan meets the intent of the heart of the city's specific plan by enhancing the pedestrian experience along Stevens Creek Boulevard with a double row of trees, an inviting interface with front doors facing the sidewalk, and a pedestrian plaza anchored by artwork. Next slide, please. Our original site plan included a building that faced toward the south with a 10- to 15-foot setback from the porch to the southern property line. In response to city feedback and sensitivity to the neighbors, we reoriented buildings seven through 10 and redesigned the internal circulation. Next slide, please. This led to an increased setback along the southern property line to over 32 feet for Building 7 and over 37 feet for Building 8. Additionally, we reoriented the southern buildings 90 degrees so they would face away from the southern property line. In response to further input from the neighbors, our design team was able to shift Buildings 7 and 8, as well as a hammerhead turnaround and additional 1 foot to the north. We do not anticipate much traffic within the hammerhead turnaround, other than trash vehicles once a week and emergency vehicles. Next slide, please. The updated site plan is shown in blue, and the original site plan is shown in red. As you can see, the updated plan reflects the new orientation of the street and Buildings 7 and 8, and also includes added screening trees along the southern property line for additional privacy. The screening trees were originally 24-inch box trees, but after conversations with the neighbors, we increased the size of the trees to be 36-inch box trees, which start at approximately 11-foot 6 inches tall when they're planted and grow up to 25 feet tall at maturity. In addition, the separation between the two properties is by an existing 10-foot concrete wall, which provides for an added 4 feet of height over the city-required 6-foot good neighbor wooden fence. Next slide, please. We submitted an SB 330 preliminary application for the project in January of 2024, hosted a neighborhood meeting in June of 2024, and submitted our formal application in July of 2024. At the onset of the project, we mailed invitations to our neighborhood meeting to all property owners within a 500-foot radius of the project. Since then, we've worked closely with city staff through five rounds of detailed review, ultimately submitting a fully compliant set in March of 2025. Following the Planning Commission hearing in June of 2025, we met individually with neighbors and the Schofield Drive Neighborhood Group to hear their comments and concerns. Next slide, please. In respect to architecture, it draws on contemporary Mediterranean-style aesthetics with arch-porch elements, low-sloping hip and gable roofs with rounded roof tiles and metal accent details and railings. Window shapes and sizes are straightforward and create a rhythm for the elevations. Exterior materials include a high-quality mix of decorative tile accents at key window locations and porch openings. Color schemes have been thoughtfully developed to showcase the contemporary Mediterranean-style architecture. Next slide, please. In addition to complying with the state energy code and the city's REACH code, the project will be all-electric, and all the homes will be equipped with solar panels. The community will include drought-tolerant landscaping, water-conserving irrigation systems, including climate-sensitive controllers in common areas, and low-impact design treatment of stormwater runoff. In addition, every garage will be EV-ready with capacity for a Level 2 EV charger. Next slide, please. The project will provide several important public benefits for the community. First, the project will provide 59 new homes, contributing to the city's RINA obligations for the sixth housing cycle, and also gives families and aspiring first-time homebuyers like myself a chance at homeownership in Cupertino. Second, we're proposing to designate 12 of the units as below-market-rate units or BMR units. Six of the BMR units will be for median-income households, and six will be for moderate-income households in compliance with the city's below-market-rate housing program. Third, the project will contribute approximately 2.5 million in park fees, 550,000 in school fees, and 120,000 to the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class 4 bike lane project. Fourth, the new residents from our community will contribute to the transformation of the heart of the city to a pedestrian-oriented walking district, and they will have the ability to walk to the shops and restaurants offered along Stevens Creek Boulevard and South Deansville Boulevard. Next slide, please. With these public benefits, we believe that the project will be a valuable asset to the community, helping the city meet the demand for housing so that it can sustain a thriving, multi-generational community and a pedestrian-oriented heart-of-the-city commercial district. Thank you again for your consideration this evening. We respectfully request you vote in favor of approving the project. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So that's just seven minutes. Thank you for good control of time. Yeah. So now we would, questions from the councilmembers? Vice Mayor?
Thank you all for the presentations. Just a quick question regarding the rear setback. So under density bonus law with regards to waivers, what would the, what is the minimum rear setback you could have?
I don't believe there's a minimum that's stipulated in the state density bonus law. So we could have gotten much narrower, or what do you call it, less in setback. We tried to do the best that we could with the number of housing that's being proposed.
Correct. Okay, so I think probably for practical reasons, perhaps 4 feet would be the practical limit, but I just wanted to point out that while you are using the state law, that allows you to really, really reduce the rear setback considerably. Thank you.
Thank you.
So councilmember Mohan?
You had listed a sort of calendar or a schedule that you followed from January 2024
Correct.
to now, and I noticed that the most recent community meeting you held was June 2025?
Yeah, we just recently, after the Planning Commission hearing, met individually with the neighbors that wanted to meet with us. In addition, we also asked to have a neighborhood meeting, which we invited everyone within that area backing to their property. So that was two meetings that we had.
Okay. And were there any concerns that came up at that meeting that you may or may not have addressed in?
So I think we addressed, really, the asks that the neighbors had. I think one of their asks that we discussed with them and explained to them where we are is, they wanted to see if we could increase the height of the concrete wall that separates the two properties. Currently, it's a 10-foot concrete wall, and we didn't build or design that. What we explained in our interactions with the neighbors was that that wall was designed to be 10-foot. You can't add to that wall because structurally, every wall is designed for the height and the width and the placement of where it's located. In addition, we thought that providing the landscaping and the trees that we're putting on-site and increasing the size from 24-inch to 36-inch box provides an initial planting that's higher than that 10-foot wall. So I think everybody understood, and I think we got to a consensus on that. But that's still, I think that was an item of discussion that we went through with the adjoining neighbors.
Okay, and you're talking about the rear wall that separates?
The existing concrete wall that separates the two.
Okay, great, thank you. I had one other question. You know, the community is concerned about loss of retail everywhere in the city, and Staples is a retail outfit in this property. And I think I talked to you about it and to see if there was any relocation plans already, and if you could address that.
Yes. Well, their lease expires naturally on February 28 of 2026. They were offered the space in the Party City, but they declined.
Okay, so they will just go away?
That's correct. Currently, they don't have any proposals that they wanted to share.
And my last question was about the heritage oak tree that one of the residents keeps mentioning.
That's an oak tree that's off-site.
Okay.
Adjacent to our property, it's approximately 20 feet away from our property.
Okay, so that's not on this property. I just wanted to make that clear.
That's correct.
Great, thank you very much. That's it.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, questions to the applicant as well. Staff, on the applicant's side, thank you for conforming as closely as possible to the standards we have in the city. I know that things are off by an inch or off by a foot. I think those are by design, so I think those are well noted. I think that's an important piece. I do have a question, and something I overlooked, which is really the full-electric move. Have you taken or eliminated your own option to go to gas? Because this is a heavily pro-gas community in terms of being able to use gas option, and residents will feel, it'd be neat to have the option. I just don't know if we were limited by anything from staff or from the state, because we have not banned gas in the city.
Yeah, understood. As part of our company's core beliefs, we're trying to move forward with projects where it's feasible to do electric-only, and this is one of the projects that we felt electric-only works. Our marketing department actively researched to see if that would be something that would be accepted by the potential buyers, and they felt like this would be the right thing to do for this site.
Okay, to be clear, I mean, you're not forced by the city or anything else that is voluntary?
That is correct.
I just want to make sure that's true.
That is correct.
The second part is really to staff. Why are we donating back to the Stevens Creek bike lane? Is that something that we've required the applicant to do, or from the applicant's side, is that something that you decided to do?
So frontage improvements in that specific bike lane itself are actually part of the heart of the city's specific plan, and so as part of that, they're required to make those improvements with the project, and I believe that's why it's being incorporated to that extent.
So they're being, they have to contribute to the Class 4 bike lane as part of the development?
Correct.
Okay, just want to be clear on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So then I have a question about, thank you for making the BMR comparable in size to the market-rate units. I really appreciate that, so many families could benefit. But then I do wonder, how come the project did not, is not required to provide low-income units, whether this is medium and moderate income?
Yeah, I mean, we're following the city's guidelines or city requirements that specify 50% of the below-market rate would be moderate, and the other 50% would be median, and that's how we underwrote the project.
Yeah, if I could just, because it is an owner-occupied project, Townhomes, versus if they were apartments or rental units, then they would have to provide lower-income units. It would have to be 15% minimum. For owner-occupied, it's 20%, median and moderate.
So what's the income range now for medium and moderate?
It goes from 80 to 120% of the median county income, which for a family of four is probably about $190,000 these days in Santa Clara County.
For median, $190,000?
Yeah, median, I believe, is listed as 100, 120%, and moderate, 80 to 100. Generally, it's often referred to just as moderate, which covers 80 to 120, but there's six units each of median, six moderate. So it's consistent with the city's BMR policy for owner-occupied development.
Okay, great. And then I'm curious that there is, you didn't take any concession, but then there were 10 waivers. And usually, a density bonus project takes a certain number of concession and some number of waivers. So I'm just curious, how come this decision of taking only waivers, no concession?
I'll just clarify that they did propose two concessions, and those were to address the retail component not being included in the project.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right. So the waivers were, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Now then, we go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have six requests to speak from in Community Hall. I see two requests to speak virtually. That would bring the estimated speaking time to 24 minutes. So I'll go ahead and So I'll go ahead and call on those requesting to speak in Community Hall. We have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Rajiv Chamrat, followed by Imad Ibrahim. Welcome, Jennifer. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please have your requests submitted in the next nine minutes.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Jennifer Griffin, long-term resident of Cupertino. And my grandmother lived in Cupertino from 1950 to 19, I think, 85. It was off by 10 years last time. So I'm familiar with the downtown at various different times. I commend this group for a very good presentation. The planning commission meeting was very thorough and robust. I think a lot of things were addressed. I did attend that, and I think a lot of concerns were either raised or addressed, et cetera. There were more questions, and most of them were answered, and other ones, you know, they're just a process. I'm going to say initially that I am having a problem with SB 330 with this because we're losing retail. I have said this repeatedly, and Mrs. Mohan had mentioned this, I'm glad, that the loss of retail along Stevens Creek Boulevard is very, very concerning to me. And I'm still a bit confused why there is no retail component in this, considering that we're losing, I mean, I used to go to the Pizza Hut all the time. I mean, I don't know why it hasn't been reopened. We went to Fontana's. That building was rebuilt, because the previous Fontana, and then that building was only open like six years. It's brand new. And then the Staples, I go regularly. We have multiple family members that go there, and I cannot believe that a city like Cupertino with all the high tech doesn't have an office center. I mean, this is, I appreciate the fact that people have been looking at Staples to move somewhere else in the city, and I really think, I hope that the city council will address Staples and ask them if there's any other convenient areas, because I think it's a disservice to the people of Cupertino with Apple being here that we don't have office supplies. This is what's happened. We've had so many robust, good groups like Staples, and they're just gone. When I first moved to Cupertino to take a job that was swing-shift at tandem, I could go during the day and do all my shopping in Cupertino. We have lost everything. Anyway, getting back since time is going, I appreciate that the oak tree has been mentioned. I'm hoping that it's 20 feet, because those trees will live 400 years and get big. I'm a bit concerned about the traffic studies, and not so much for this one, but we have cumulative SB 330s lined up and waiting. We have another one that's down by Cupertino High School. They're cumulative effects on the traffic. And I just had a question. What is, where is the emergency exit that's next to the Indian restaurant? I didn't see a gate there on Stevens Creek. Jennifer, that is your time. Thank you. I consider that a safety issue.
And next, we have Rajiv Chamraj. Welcome, followed by Imad Ibrahim, followed by SND. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rajiv Chamraj. I live on Schofield Drive. I will be their neighbors on the south side. We first heard about this project when it came up at planning commission meeting. So we met with the developer at least two times in person, exchanged emails, and had a phone conversation multiple times. Kudos to them. They conducted themselves very professionally. Given the time shortage and other things, we worked out whatever that we can do. I think we can leave with it. So it's not the best outcome, but I think given the circumstances that this was notified to us very late, we did our best, and then I thanked them for being very professional in their outlook and conducting with themselves. So we support the project. This goes to show that people on Schofield Drive are not cuckoos opposing every sensible project that comes across in the city. We support. We need housing, that's for sure, but, you know, please do involve us, you know, when something like this happens ahead of time. So be thoughtful in terms of reaching out to the residents and getting their feedback and whatnot, and slightly changing the track. We are still opposed to 20739 Schofield project. It doesn't fit into the neighborhood. I believe it is coming to the litigation. That's what I heard last time, and today was a closed session or something on the litigation. I want the city to take a step forward, say that, hey, we are opposed to this kind of development in neighborhood. They can show somewhere else as in a responsible development, and the residents being, you know, even though the intimation and other things came late to us, but we did work out. I think we like people like them to be in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rajiv. Next, we have Imad Ibrahim, followed by SND, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome.
Good evening. So my name is Imad Ibrahim, and I am the owner of the next-door restaurant, Dish and Dash, at 2750 Stevens Creek Boulevard. And I am here tonight to express my support for the proposed townhome development by Summer Hill Homes. We welcome the new residents, who will lead to more revenue, which will help offset some of the inflationary challenges we face. The proposed townhome project will replace the older vacant retail space, providing a substantial safety improvement to the neighborhood. The existing property currently feels largely abandoned, and with the vacant restaurant building and limited customer traffic to Staples. As such, I currently have to keep certain staff members longer to walk my managers at night for safety purposes. We are also concerned about the continued turnover at the shopping center now that Party City has vacated. The permanence of the new residents directly next door will bring great tailwinds to my business, which I hope will stay for decades to come. Additionally, unlike our downtown Sunnyvale location, we don't have many customers that walk over to the restaurants on Stevens Creek. So that would be a welcoming addition. We found that there is much greater sense of community when there are residents that can walk over. Those customers visit much more often. I look forward to seeing the townhome project approved and brought to fruition, as it will greatly benefit my business, along with other businesses in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have SND, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm SND Mirlo. I'm a longtime resident of the Cupertino. This is indeed a well-defined, good project. However, I'm really concerned about the loss of the retail space across the Stevens Creek Boulevard. And if there's any chance of putting some retail space in front of the development, that would be great, because you will end up with the sidewalk that the pedestrians can walk to nowhere. I'm also aware of another development at the north side of the Stevens Creek, right across this one. They are also getting rid of all the retail space and the services provided. It's not only the shops that you shop to, but that's also the services that are going away, which is really concerning for the city of Cupertino. Pedestrians should be able to walk to somewhere. The next thing is a question about the trees that will be planted. Can the HOA decide to cut those trees, or do they need to get a permit from the city to cut those trees? Because some of these developments, they put the trees in, and along the way, after getting the permit, some of these trees do disappear. So can I get an answer to that one? Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Rota Frye. And then we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members Fruen, Mohan, and Wong. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I am here to urge you to unanimously approve this project. As we all know, this site is long overdue for development. The Pizza Hut and Fontana's buildings have been vacant for years, well before COVID. There doesn't seem to be interest in either one. So those parcels need to be put to a better use. Staples, well, it's limping along. There certainly aren't many customers when I shop there. The location of this site is immediately adjacent to the crossroads center, which can serve as the anchor for retail establishments. With the loss of Party City, there's room for retail, provided there's sufficient foot traffic. These homes would help that foot traffic. At this point, I don't see the need for additional retail space. There's quite a bit of vacant space in the city, plus there's going to be an additional 4,000 square feet of retail space at Westport, in addition to the 2,400 square feet of vacant space that's already there, and nobody wants to lease it. While I would prefer a taller multifamily project, the finance market is favoring townhomes, so this is a reasonable development. Townhomes are the new starter homes in our community, rather than the traditional single-family homes on a large lot, which are now unaffordable, particularly to our children. Townhomes will bring in younger families and their children as the only way to counter the declines in school enrollment. What's more important is to get this project approved and under construction, given the rapid rise in construction costs and the uncertainty in the financial markets. Please approve this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Rota Frye. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. I have some random comments. First of all, shout out to Summer Hill for making discretionary improvements with the neighbors after the planning commission had approved the project. It was absolutely discretionary, and so they deserve an adagaw or an attaboy. Anyway, regarding the, or at a they, I guess, being inclusive here. Anyway, regarding the BMRs, one thing that occurred to me is that there's four bedrooms. So if you've got a four-bedroom unit, you can sell it for more money, but actually, the cost per square foot of building a four-bedroom is less than a smaller unit. So I don't know how exactly they're doing their math, but I thought it was kind of interesting to think about that, and as to how affordable they will actually be. Yeah, I love Staples. I love retail. I would love to see our city council, in addition to doing the Pledge of Allegiance every meeting, to also do a pledge of Shop Cupertino, and even maybe set it to music with a Macarena, because we need Shop Cupertino. It's quality-of-life issue, and, you know, and of course, it's a money issue, because every hundred dollars spent on taxable items, for every hundred, Cupertino gets a buck. That means our roads, that means our excellent staff, that means a lot of services. So sales tax is really important. So I'm sad about that. I'm sad that, you know, our state, once again, our state laws are telling, are lording over us what our city is supposed to look like. And I think that we really need to take our voices back and decide what kind of building we want to have in our city. And Summer Hill's doing their job, and they're obviously allowed to do all these things. But, you know, please, we need to, we need to work on our state representatives to have better, as they call it, local control. So thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Rota. And there are two members of the public requesting to speak virtually, Sanar and Luis Moranti. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I am chair of the planning commission, but speaking on behalf of myself today, and be happy to take any questions you might have on the planning commission hearing that was held. I am supportive of the project. I think Summer Hill did a very thorough job in working with planning commissioners ahead of the meeting to get their input, to get the community input, and I believe there were changes made to have trees planted at the southern property border with Schofield Drive to give them more privacy. There were changes made to the layout of the property so that there's less intrusion of privacy with Schofield Drive. And I asked them to make changes on planting trees on the front of each of the units, and I believe it was building five and six, if I'm not mistaken, and I believe they made those changes to further improve privacy. In addition, staff worked to reduce the height of some of the buildings. They were initially at four floors on all of the buildings, and that came down to four floors in the center of the lot. So all of that is great. I do want to bring a few items to your attention that have not yet been discussed. The first is, we, as commissioners, were told that SB 330 requires the use of objective standards, and discretionary input is not permitted, and absent the approval of objective standards for Cupertino, there is no objective standard as the baseline. However, I wish to bring to your attention that there are California government courts that say that if the existing city code is quantified and specific and is not subject to interpretation, then it does count as objective design standards. I have further run this by the city attorney, and the city attorney confirmed to me prior to the planning commission hearing that there are clauses in our Heart of the City specific plan that do count today as objective design standards. So I would urge council to ask staff to publish which clauses in the Heart of the City specific plan are actually objective as applying to the California government court, and to have that as a table that you can then reference to look at which of those are being enforced for a given property under review, and if there are variances, how that are being addressed. Because I think the easy answer here is to say, oh, ODS is not approved, and therefore we have nothing to go by. And that is not true. And we need to pay close attention to the Heart of the City specific plan. It does have very quantified clauses that can be enforced, and I want to give you a couple of examples. The first is, I believe there are specific requirements around the community recreational area, and I'd like you to ask about whether the community recreational area is something that was considered for this property, and what can be done to address that, particularly if that can be treated as a objective design standard from the Heart of the City specific plan. And the second thing, along similar lines, is the provision for...
Thank you, San. That is your time. Next, we have Luis Moranti. Welcome, Luis.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening, City Council. My name is Luis Morante. I am calling on behalf of the Bay Area Council to support this project. Let me find my notes here, sorry. The Bay Area Council represents about 350 of the region's largest employers. Public agencies and unions were committed to building the 3.5 million new homes California needs to address our housing shortage, and we especially support projects that provide homes near jobs and transit. This project is exactly the kind of housing Cupertino and the larger region need. It transforms an underutilized commercial site into 59 new homes, including 12 deed-restricted for sale, affordable units for moderate and median-income households. I want to note that new home ownership options are exceedingly rare in California, and this is a really great opportunity to add not just housing, but homes that people can buy and get into for a starter home situation. Typically, Bay Area communities are seeing rental housing, so this is a really particularly beneficial project for your community. The project is consistent with the general plan, the Heart of the City specific plan, and uses the state density bonus law to create a well-designed community with open space, landscaping, and public art. It helps Cupertino move forward towards meeting its freehold obligations under the sixth cycle of the housing element, and helps you avoid penalties that could come with noncompliance. Approving this project sends a clear message that Cupertino is serious about building homes at all income levels, and we urge your support for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. And Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, so let's bring to the council. Should we have a motion to start the discussion?
Okay, so let's bring to the council. Should we have a motion to start the discussion? Anyone? Vice Mayor?
Sure. So I move the recommended action, which are items 1 through 3. And I will defer to the city of attorney if I need to read these all out completely or if just enumerating them is adequate.
Enumerating them is fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember first. Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to clarify. Does the staff recommendation cover all the Planning Commission recommendation already?
Yes, it did. The original staff recommendation was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission without any changes.
Because I think the Planning Commission chair just mentioned something about trees. And so those were already integrated.
Yeah, this was subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting. I think it was the community meeting that was alluded to by Summerhill's representatives that they had provided an additional buffer between the rear of their property and the rear of the Schofield Drive residences there. So it was additional landscaping.
I thought it said some other tree. Okay, that's fine. Then I'd like to clarify, what is the amount of retail we are losing?
Need a minute to get the square footage.
It says approximately 30,000 square feet.
Approximately is fine. So about 30,000. And although this is a really great project, and I really appreciate the quality design and then your, the applicants' open communication with us and then are willing to adjust. But then I do want to recognize we are losing 30,000 square foot of retail. And the heart of the city does have the requirement of retail frontage along Stevens Creek, right? That's one of the objective standards we have.
That's correct, yes.
But with SB 330, they are able, I think, density bonus law, they can take concession to waive that objective standard. And I understand you for the clear presentation about the 10 waivers that's requested. I think some of those waivers are objective standards too, like the number of feet in the setback. But then with the current state law, even if we set objective standards, a density bonus project is able to waive all of them. There is no limit on the number of waivers they can request, right?
Correct.
Thank you. And then I'd like to address some questions raised by the community members. Someone asked about, can HOA decide to cut those trees, the, acting as a buffer? What is the, what is there, if, or maybe it's not maintained well?
So we have a requirement that any trees associated with the development project be maintained on the property unless a tree removal permit is approved. And with that, a replacement would need to be planted.
So the HOA would be responsible to keep those trees well-maintained?
Correct.
And replace them if they're not. Great. So someone mentioned about an emergency exit next to an Indian restaurant. I'm guessing that's referring to the Dish Dash? So there is, I think, an emergency exit that would be locked, right? Is it?
There may be a gate there, and that's something I think the applicant could address as well. This did come up at Planning Commission, that there was a gate that would be locked at this point in time, since there's no direct access into that site and for security reasons for this development. But I don't know that that would really qualify as emergency access. It's more of just a future access point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Wong and the Vice Mayor, I don't know who.
I'll yield to the Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So another comment from the public was, I want to correct, is the California, the 3.5 million homes, that's from a McKinsey study in 2016. And it, it's been argued that the figure is more like 1.5 million. And Governor Newsom has acknowledged that the 3.5 million figure as a stretch goal and has shifted focus to a more achievable goal of 2.5 million. So I just, I don't want to keep hearing the 3.5 repeated. There was a question about the retail loss. So I've been, I've put together a table. The retail loss that we're experiencing is about 1.3 million square feet. That is, most of it is, 76.6% of that loss is from the Valco project, which has a reduction of 981,388 square feet. The contribution of the Staples project is a reduction of 2.4%. That being said, our overall change in retail square footage is something to be concerned about. It's about 35% when you add up the number of projects since 2018. So just for clarity, I included the Valco Town Center, Westport, Allen Row, Beta Brothers, Canyon Crossing, Marina Plaza, the Staples site, Coach, which is at the corner of Prospect and Deans Boulevard, United Furniture, the Panera Project, and the upcoming Finch site. So I just want to, want to clarify that. And I've asked staff to provide this information, to verify it. I do have a question, which I know we're past question time, but I don't believe there are any density bonus units in this project. Okay, so you're at the base. That's fine. And I do appreciate that the move towards all electric and solar, I'm going to assume that those are induction cooktops that you plan in the kitchen rather than gas. Okay, thank you. And I, we had a lengthy discussion, I did, with the developer about the, the art that's planned. So there's a very exciting corner up in the northeast, which is along Stevens Creek Boulevard, where their, their public art will be placed. And as the plan is showing, there's outdoor seating that is provided for it. So I look forward to seeing something very exciting. And, and I mentioned the Westport emergence sculpture that's there. I think that was almost $400,000 worth of public art. I hope other individuals have a chance to go out and see that. I appreciate that you've gone up in size with the 36-inch box trees. And, and also that you're really working with the residents to accommodate them. That's why I brought up the, how far back could you actually go if you're using the law? Which, it's alarming. It doesn't sound like there actually is a limit, like you could go like zero lot line potentially. So what else do I have here? I also like that the BMR units are quite large and that they are for-sale units. And I think you might be hitting that, that sweet spot, which is like a teacher's salary that, where a teacher's worked for a few years and then they're now pricing out. I did pull up some of the, the income amount. So 80% to 120 is 147,440 to 221,160 for a family of four. So hopefully, these, these units are scooped up quickly. And I really appreciate all the work that you've done with the, with the community. And it's, it's refreshing. Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
Well, on that refreshing note, I'll add to it. I concur with the Vice Mayor on the fake stats from an ex-MB legislative director. I want to concur that the bad housing laws, as acknowledged by some of my guests here, have made housing more expensive, not less. We need less regulation and not more progressive state control. With that, though, I appreciate the community involvement and input. I think that was very important. I think the outreach is what we need. And when we work with complex housing projects, that kind of involvement is very important. And, and the way that you responded and the speed that you responded with the neighbors and their issues, I think that should be commended. The double trees are helpful to keeping close to the heart of the city. That's really part of the design and the design aesthetic we have here. I do have a couple of questions here, though, and I'm going to go back to the bike lanes and the gas. We are told that bike lanes are funded by grants by our public works team. Yet who is making the decision to direct transportation fees to the Stevens Creek Bike Lane Project? I'm hoping to get some support here from my fellow councilpeople here for the funds to go to signal and road improvements, because as we keep stacking traffic on the Stevens Creek, we're going to have some pain. I'd rather see that money go to funding more of the signal and road improvements that we need. Given all the SB 330 projects, we need to have more funding for traffic. People don't get around on bikes to get from point A to B on their commute, and it's only going to get more dense. And so hopefully, maybe some of my fellow councilmembers here would be able to support moving those funds into more traffic and signal improvements instead of the bike lanes, which we were told were well-funded. And then, given the PG&E outages, we are putting residents at risk. I'm going to say that again. We're putting residents at risk for not having a backup. I would like to see if there's interest, too, from fellow councilmembers here to push for a gas option, given PG&E's track record in this area. How many times have you experienced a outage in Cupertino? Go look at the map. It is huge, right? And not having that backup option is something that residents would want to have. And plus, we have a heavily first-generation immigrant community that likes to cook in gas. I know it goes against your aesthetic. I'm not pushing against the plan. But just think about that and consider that, that gas option as something that people want. This is Cupertino, Fremont, right, Los Gatos. People want gas. And even though it's easier to put in or cheaper to put in electric, we have had such huge problems with PG&E, especially on outages. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember first.
Just a couple of quick notes to the applicant. I really want to express my thanks for how many times you were willing to meet and the number of, you know, even if they might, they might seem to the average person, small changes, certainly to the immediately impacted neighbors, they can feel much bigger, down to letting them, you know, help you choose the type of tree so that they can get the type of privacy that they want to see. I think that that's a really wonderful thing to see. I, I will express some frustration that you couldn't make the project a little denser along Stevens Creek Boulevard. It would certainly be helpful toward our housing element goals. It would make the project even more positive in terms of our net fiscal impact to the city, and it would improve the, the overall retail outlook because we would have more customers for businesses, as the member of the public from Dish and Dash mentioned. So those are really my comments. Thank you so much for bringing a project that I think is a lot easier for the community to support.
Okay, so I do have some more question, just to clarify. This site is a housing element site. So what was the density zone in the housing element?
In the housing element, the density range is 50 to 65 units per acre. So it's about a three-acre site. If they built at the top end of that without a density bonus, it would be 195 units. So you could assume a 200-unit project, for sure, with a density bonus.
And the current density is about 20 units per acre.
Right, correct.
So it's much lower than the housing element.
Correct. And many of the things that they had asked for waivers for, they would not have needed waivers for under the current zoning, such as building height, and even the rear setback would comply with the current R4.
Would we get in trouble with HCD with a much lower density development?
We won't get in trouble, but there is a table in the staff report where we have to make a no-net-loss finding. And what that indicates is while we were well beyond our Reno, we had over 5,800 potential units. If you look at the Reno-by-income category, in the low and moderate ranges, we're getting closer because we're not getting as many units as we expected on this. So it only becomes a concern if successive projects come in lower than what we expected.
Yeah, thank you. And then I understand the Everledge Court project that many people are concerned about would also be done by Summerhill. And the density is about the same as 20 units per acre. So for the residents who are concerned, you can take a look at the project to get some sense. And I hope that you, I think, I trust that you will reach out to the community on that project, as you have done for this. And one final question is, what's the timeline for development? When we will see the projects? Yeah.
We anticipate upon approval of the project to complete the working drawings within the year. So I would expect that you would see activity on sites within 12 months. It takes anywhere from eight to 10 months to do the site improvements. So a year, let's say, to start construction site work, eight to 10 months to complete the site work, and for models to start at that time.
Through the mayor, can I ask a question?
Sorry, one more question is, if, for the people who are interested in those 12 BMR units, what would be the process they can get in the queue to?
So we will engage with staff immediately upon approval of the project to start that, that process.
So they can start already now to?
So I, I'm not sure when the applications can start, but we will certainly start working with staff immediately in trying to get the, the process of getting the BMR, BMR contracts, BMR process, everything started so that we can be ready when the site starts construction.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, actually, I have a question now. What is the latest that you anticipate having the project ready for, you know, the first 10, first occupant?
Currently forecasting late, maybe Q3, Q4, 2027 will be the first residents moving in.
Got it. And this is to the, this is to the city attorney. We've had traditionally a lot of problems with developers coming with projects and not building. We think you will build. We don't think you will. But if we were to put an expiration date on the, on the approval to 2030, would that be sufficient for you guys to be able to complete?
So typically, typically when we get projects approved, there are lender requirements. I have no idea what that would do for the financing for the project.
Okay. We don't want to impact that, but, but just trying to make sure that you build instead of getting approval and just run away.
We're ready to start. If I could add, so the process with PG&E typically takes over a year to get to where we are. The site is designed for electric. There's no way to, I can't say there's no way. We'll have to go back a year to redesign the project with PG&E and the streets to be able to get a gas line in there. So that's not really in the cards at this point for this project. I just wanted to make sure I explained the timing.
No, I understand that. I understand. Pizza had a big-ass gas line, so it's just, they did. You have gas there. But thank you.
All right, thank you.
So what's the expiration date for this application, this, what's the expiration date now? I think usually there is five-year.
It's a two-year permit, but it can be extended.
So what's on the agenda in the staff recommendation is two-year permit?
Right. If approved tonight, yes, it would be approved for two years. But again, the applicant could request an approval, and that's an administrative extension.
Oh, okay.
Our expectation, and working with staff and in other jurisdictions, typically within one year, we can get our final map and get that recorded. So that would come back to council, and that's the final plans that will allow us to start the construction for the homes. So that's our expectations to be, to be, to have the map approved and start construction within the year.
Okay, sounds great. But then, I mean, for the people who are interested in the below-market rate, would usually, what's the typical process? Would they only get information on when they can apply after the construction or it's complete, or the, the process could be earlier?
It's generally after we have building permits on file and construction is more imminent, because sometimes at the discretionary approval level, projects can sit for some period of time.
So they should be looking at about Q3, Q4 of '27?
Yeah, I would say on all the different cities that we work in, they don't want to start the process too early because what happens is exactly as stated. Some projects may get delayed. But more importantly, if you, if you advertise and you start contracting for the homes, people's situations change, so it becomes very complicated for the consultant, whether it's the city or a third-party consultant that processes the BMR contracts and applications if they're sitting there for a long time. So they, as staff stated, it's usually best when you start construction. What we're going to do is start the process with staff so everything's ready. But as far as advertising, and typically what I've seen in almost all the communities that we do, that advertising starts usually... the communities that we do, that advertising starts usually when you do, their construction starts for the homes.
Thank you. It's almost nine o'clock, I guess we should move on.
Can I ask for a friendly amendment to make sure that the fees go to the, go to signal improvements instead of the Class 4 bike lanes? So is there any interest in seconding a friendly amendment?
Actually, I have a question. That 150,000, that's, is that transportation impact fee? I thought it's not, not.
I mean, who made the decision for that to go to Class 4 bike lanes? We were well-funded, we were told, so.
Give a minute, I believe our public works.
I know, I know, I'm directing at you, I'm directing at Chad.
Best buddy to answer that.
Counsel, Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. The project is subject to fees. The bike lanes in front are a requirement of our Muni Code, section, chapter 14. They are required to improve our street frontages to city standards, and that includes any approved projects or plans for that work. So they are required to construct those bike improvements along their property frontage. However, in this case, it doesn't make sense to put in those bike lanes at this point in time because it would be bike lanes to nowhere. So we're asking for an in-lu fee. All that being said, this can't be applied to an intersection improvement because it's not directly in front of their property. So this is a fee for that work, and the TIF fee is still being paid by the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's my understanding. So it's like a residential, we are required to put inside walk in front of your house, home. So it's part, it's not transportation impact fee.
There's a lot of work to do on this active transportation plan.
Okay. Vote then, yeah?
The motion carries unanimously.
Should we take a five-minute break? Okay. So we'll come back at 9:03. Item 13, approval of the fiscal year 2526 fee schedule update.
Thank you, Mayor. For this item, we have Jonathan, our finance manager, and also Christine Alfaro, the Director of Administrative Services, to present. I also want to point out that there was an informational memorandum that was issued to address some of the questions and concerns that had come up from council and the community. There's also a supplemental memo as part of the agenda packet that redlines for all of the fee studies since 2016. And with that, I will turn it over to Steph.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Chow and council members. Tonight we'll be presenting the fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed fee schedule update. I will provide a brief overview, starting with what defines a user fee, an overview of the city's fee schedules and the services they cover, and the methodology used to calculate and adjust fee rates. Following that, I will cover the fiscal impact of the proposed fee adjustments, staff recommendations for city council consideration. As defined by the 2023 user fee study, user fee is a fee or rate charged to an individual or group that receives a private benefit from services provided by the city. This slide provides key background on the city's fee-setting framework. The city's complete comprehensive fee studies in both, completed, complete, sorry, the city completed comprehensive fee studies in both 2016 and 2023, which established the full cost of providing city services and set foundation for our fee schedules. In 2024, the city council adopted user fee cost recovery policy, which incorporated several important elements to support long-term financial stability and transparency. These included a formal cycle for conducting future cost allocation plans in a user fee study, an annual update mechanism to ensure fees keep pace with inflation and actual cost changes, a phase-in period for select fees that required a multi-year approach to achieve full cost recovery, and the establishment of target cost recovery ranges for each service area. Together, these tools ensure the city's fees remain tied to the actual cost of service delivery, set appropriate cost recovery goals, and provide a structured, policy-driven framework for annual adjustments. Tonight's fee update includes four schedules. Schedule A, general fees. This schedule includes fees not specific to a department or division that would require a dedicated schedule, such as code enforcement permits, false alarms, and city clerk services. Schedule B, engineering fees. This schedule covers fees necessary for engineering division within the Public Works Department to review plans and applications for private developments, which includes design and inspections. Schedule C, planning fees. This schedule is utilized by the Planning Division, which administers all required review and evaluation processes for proposed land use projects and maintains the goals and objectives of the city's general plan and zoning ordinance. And lastly, the Schedule D, building fees. This schedule is utilized by the Building Division in the Community Development Department and covers general building, construction plan check, and building code enforcement. Additionally, the city has a fifth schedule, Schedule E, parks and recreation fees, which is not included in tonight's update. Onto the fiscal impact of the proposed fee schedule updates. Total additional revenue is estimated to be approximately 650,000, largely in the general fund. The table shown separates the estimated increases by schedule. At this time, staff is recommending the adoption of resolution approving fiscal year 2526, schedules A through D, with an effective date September 1st, 2025. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Oh, okay. Anyone, Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the supplemental material that you had in the informational memo. I just want to double-check because it looks like Schedule C, planning, under definitions, possibly item Q is missing some words to it. And so I'm not sure if this is the same as that you would see in the red line, but it says special events permit, a request to host a special event for no more than a total of 12 calendar days in a year, including comma, but not limited to, comma, employee, blank. There's no, I think possibly that's missing a couple of words there. So I'm not sure if it got corrected in the, in the final, in the agenda packet, and it's, it's just missing that here. So if someone could check, I'll be looking for it right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, is this the, the red line that we attached to the informational memo? That was last year's, just for reference, so that I can take a second look and see if it's included in the current year's red line or final fee schedule?
Thank you.
Councilmember Fuhrin?
Toward the end of the presentation, you noted that most of the fees would go to the general fund. So which ones would be restricted and wouldn't go to the general fund, and why?
Those are the impact fees. So, and most of those remained unchanged.
Great.
If anything, actually, all of them remain unchanged.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, thank you. So I think it is a correction that needs to happen this year.
We'll make that.
So it looks like it got adopted without, with that missing. So it might be employee cost. I have no idea what's supposed to go there. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I think it's there.
I'm looking at attachment C, and I'm reading it to say employee holiday party, summer barbecue, and any outdoor event where normal operations. It seems to be corrected, my version.
Oh, I see. They've added on several lines to it. Okay, thank you. I just saw the word employee and didn't see that that was corrected. Good, okay. That's, I have nothing. Thanks.
Through the mayor?
One, and then, Councilmember Mahin.
Thanks. I just want to thank staff for actually putting in the right CPI, CCI, and labor costs. I know there's a bit of factors in terms of where we are, given our fiscal situation. I think this makes a lot of sense. I'll have something more to say when we get to Schedule E at another point in time. And thank you so much for your work.
Councilmember Mahin.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was, you mentioned a multi-year cost recovery for certain items. Can you explain it, can you explain it a little more for the public? What does that mean because?
So one particular fee were additions, and that would be in the Schedule D in building. So when the fee study was conducted in 2023, that fee increased substantially over, I think it was close to four to five, four to five times what we were charging then. So instead of increasing the rate by four to five-fold, we decided a three-year approach to increase that rate so that we will eventually get to the full cost recovery at year four.
Okay, so I think there's a reference in your staff report that for this year, or for the next year, the increase is somewhere around 75%. I just wanted to make sure that that's not misunderstood. That's, we are getting to 100% and we're doing it in stages. We're not increasing at 75%.
We are increasing at 75% to the previous year, and eventually we'll get to the full cost recovery for that.
So by next year, we'll get to the 100%?
Correct, correct. Of the, what it costs the city to perform that task.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Can you clarify again, I think especially based Schedule B, there is an increase of 9.7% year to year. What's the cost for that?
So we did touch on this, we'll actually explain it in our, the informational memo. One thing that we noticed in this last year was the unfunded accrued liability. So this is the pension cost that the city is obligated to pay, and it's considered a benefit to the employees. So this is a labor cost. Last year, in fiscal year 242425, that, it appears that that increase was not included as part of the cost recovery. So last year, it only increased by 1%. This year, we're essentially doing a catch-up. So we're increasing by 9.7%, if I remember correctly. And so the average between the years, between the two years is just over 5%, which is actually less than historical averages.
Yeah, I, thank you for providing the table for last year. I think some of these, but it would be nice if they were not in the same table for comparison. I had to switch around. But it seems some of these last year even have a minus. There was even a reduction last year, or a very small increase, like 1 or 2%. So now this year, we are catching up. So historically, this, when we look at cost recovery, we do include pension cost?
Correct, because that is a benefit. It's a labor cost, staff cost, right, to, very similar to health benefits, pension benefits. It's, it's in the same realm.
Okay. And remind me again, in the policy, why are we recovering only 50 to 80% for the planning department?
I'm sorry?
I'm looking at the policy. So for Schedule A, general, we, cost recovery is 100%. And Schedule B for engineering, the cost recovery in the policy is 75 to 100%. So what is our current percentage?
So it'll, it'll vary. As you remember, there are certain costs that we cannot directly associate with fees. So collectively, as a department or fees, we will come in under that threshold. And on average, as you'll, we'll have to go back to that fee study, it shows where does the city land as far as full cost recovery. So as a department, you can make that comparison if we were able to pull that, that fee study from last year. I don't have that in front of me.
But you mentioned that next year, we will go to 100% recovery.
To perform that specific task.
Then, so even with the 9.7% increase, that's not for recovery?
With the 9.7% increase, that'll maintain a full cost recovery goal for, to perform that specific task. Collectively, as a department, for, let's say, community development, we'll fall short of that 100% because there are fees that we cannot directly attribute to a task. And because of that, we won't fully recover that cost, and that is outlined in the fee study.
More specifically, I mean, for those items that we see a 9.7% increase this year, would we see another 10% increase next year? That's more, I'm trying to find out. Or is that already 100%? So next year, it will be CPI only?
I understand what you just said. So it depends on what is being budgeted in the coming year. So let's say, through labor negotiations, you decide to increase the wages or a cost of living adjustment, then that would be baked into the next year's labor cost. And then, depending on what that rate is, we'll increase labor by that proportionate amount.
Okay, so if we decide to increase wages, that then that will be reflecting?
That is one factor. Other factors that are beyond our control are health benefits.
But right now, it's already 100%. So we are not going to recoup the remaining percentage?
We're at a, we'll be essentially flat again.
Okay. Any, anyone else has questions? So then, let's go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, currently see one member of the public requesting to speak virtually. And Rhoda Frye is requesting to speak from Community Hall. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I hate to see all these fees going up, and I recognize that we do need to do a certain amount of cost recovery. Yes, the fees do benefit private entities. However, there is also a public benefit. So we want to make sure that people do get building permits. And in fact, I wonder, you know, do we have cost recovery on code enforcement, for example? You know, we, obviously, we don't have cost recovery on the library. But there is a public benefit when, when, when people go through what the planning department does for us and what the building department does and those things. So I'd like that to be considered. But even more importantly, is you've got two sides of the equation, right? The other side is the cost side. So why is this stuff costing so much? Why are the, why are the, why are, why is the cost of develop, delivering these services just escalating, and it seems like it's beyond control? So I hope that we can also start looking at the cost side as well, and not, not only to be looking at how are we going to continue funding, funding the fees. And thank you very much for the comprehensive report.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. It's a short comment. I just, you know, you've got residents thinking, why us? Why are we getting burdened with all this? And there are reasons, of course. But let's just keep in mind that when you're doing something like this, assuming it will be something you do out of need, that we continue to give developers, and some of them very unfriendly developers, waivers and concessions that take many away we should be getting so that our residents don't have to fill the pockets.
Thank you, Lisa. And we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually, San Ar. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I believe you have received multiple letters on this topic. And I find myself having to remind council members on dais throughout the evening today that you are there to represent us residents, not to represent staff and. that you are there to represent us residents, not to represent staff and healthcare and pensions and the unions and the labor increases and, and all of the prior councils' actions that were taken that we are dealing from. But you are there today to represent us residents and you, the majority, are there today to rectify the many, many, many sufferings that we are dealing with from the decisions of the past council majorities. So, if you are on the dais, having run on a campaign of being pro-pressed, you promised us that you would listen to us. And we are asking you to undo this cost recovery policy. You've heard from multiple residents. And Mayor, this is not a one-time change. Please do not keep asking this question. Healthcare and pension only goes up, and it goes up disproportionately, and you're not going to be seeing this change going down. So, we are seeing this number only going to go up. Previous to this policy, healthcare and pension was not attributed to these fees. And the people that apply for these permits are seniors that are on the verge of retiring or have retired, they've lived decades in their homes, their homes need remodeling, or maybe the HVAC is out of life and needs a HVAC replacement, or a water heater replacement, or asbestos inducting that's being asked to be replaced. And these are problems that, you know, 30, 40-year-old homes need work. And in their retirement years, you're hurting them with these permit fees that cost 20, 30, 40K. I've had applicants come to me and say, I'm being asked to pay 65K in fees. I've had applicants come to me and say, staff won't let me talk to you because unless I pay the fees, they don't want me to talk to you. And so, I'm asking you, please think about who voted for you and why you're on dais and you're not there to represent healthcare and pensions. You're there to undo the cost recovery policy that will undo the enormous fee hikes that we're dealing with. And do not think that this is just those few mentions that are remodeling and let's stick it to them. No, it's not that. It's remodeling from retirees, including our ex-mayor that's on dais, including an ex-mayor that is no longer on dais, but is on the Planning Commission dais, and including many other residents that are seniors in Cupertino dealing with fees that are just outrageous and we cannot take these fees. And, and I'm asking you, do not, do not let this go by. And if you do, you have squarely violated your campaign promises to residents. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Thank you. So, I, I guess I will start with more question here. So, according to the policy, which is in my screenshot shared here, for, I think most of the, the largest increase is, is in Schedule B, that's 9.7% this year. And according to the policy, the recovery range is 75 to 100%. It doesn't have to be 100%. And then, item three here, under what condition we want to go high level of recovery? It's when the use of the service is specifically discouraged. And then, the service is regulatory in nature. And so, for some of these in Schedule B, I don't think that's the case. And, and some of this, like, storm management, I think there was a storm man, storm management plan fee. You do want people to do storm management. If you charge a higher fee, they may just not do it. And maybe that's discouraging to them. And then, the public staff time, I looked at, we already increased that by 13.7% last year. And now, this year, we are adding another 7.9%. Then, that's a lot of increase. Do we want to discourage people from talking to our staff? I don't think so, right? So, and then, so this is 24% increase last year in storm management plan fee. And then, we are adding another 9.7% this year. And then, the reinspection for violation, 22.1% increase last year, and we are adding another 9.7% this year. And I do see that some of the things from last year, there was a reduction of point, minus 0.4% or 1% increase last year for some of them. And then, we are adding 9.7% this year. So, I do want to see, why are we discouraging people to get permit, to, to, to reach 100%? That seems to be against the policy we have adopted. So, thank you.
Is that a question?
Yeah, that's a question. Why, how, how are you deciding we have to go to 100% for all of them? It seems you are saying this 9.7% will give us 100% recovery. And then, according to the policy, that's not something we should do. We should reduce that to 75% because high-cost recovery is only if we are discouraging that.
There are a handful of fees that the city, if you remember last year, we made, council made the conscious decision to not charge for a handful of fees. Some of these fees include the encroachment permit for those cranes, for ADUs. Another one was for the parking permits along certain locations. If I remember correctly, there was one relating to moving away from gas, natural gas appliances to electric appliances. So, there was a handful of fees council made the conscious, chose not to charge the full cost recovery. Collectively, this is the range we're trying to get to, not necessarily at the individual fee level. We certainly can go there, right? But I think if you want to make the decision, you know what? For this particular fee, we want to reach 75%. You certainly have the discretion to do that and just provide that, that direction to.
It seems we are interpreting the policy differently. You are interpreting the policy as, as an entire department, you want to reach a certain level of cost recovery because some services don't charge service, therefore, we have to raise fees for some other services in order to. But basically, we are asking, charging some residents more to subsidize some other people who are doing ADU, for example. That's not fair. I think, according to the policy, we should make decision based on individual service permit and whether we are encouraging people to get permit so that they comply, or we are discouraging them, right?
So, to your point, and part of the rates, the fee study, set the cap at the individual fee, and that fee is the 100%. We are not charging.
It's a range. We can also charge 75% that still comply with the policy.
Certainly, we can, we can charge less, but it is in a false statement to say that we're overcharging other residents for, or to subsidize others. We are charging the max amount we can charge is what the city, the city's cost. We cannot exceed that 100 threshold on a fee level.
I know, but then, in order to reach the department goal of a certain percentage, you are raising some service to 100% in order to give $0 for some other service. That's kind of still, you are.
So, where the difference in terms of being 100% cost recovery or not, it's generally going to be general fund dollars that offset the difference of the cost of the department. So, the fees are set to collect at a max 100% of what it costs. We cannot, by law, charge more than that, or that's considered a tax. So, that there is.
I know, we cannot charge more than that, but we don't have to charge 100% either.
Correct. But if we charge less, that does not result in other fees being higher because we charged less for that fee. I just wanted to make that clarification, the delta.
But you just said, because this council decided to not charge fees for cranes, for ADUs, for, and then, we have to offset the cost by increasing the fees.
So, to be frank, we'll never reach 100%. That, that is clear because certain fees, even by the departments, each one has fees that are either capped per regulation, or we have made the intention to not fully recover. So, collectively, for, at the department level, we will never reach 100%. That's just a number. We can put 99.9 there, but the goal, we'll, we know for a fact, we'll never reach 100% cost recovery. That is a goal at the individual fee unless council makes the decision to subsidize those with general fund monies to perform that specific service.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Moe.
Thank you for all the information. So, if, if council wanted to be subsidizing fees with general funds, that would then take away money that would go to Movies in the Park, or Shakespeare, or a number of other things, fireworks, because you won't have the money to pay for them. Is that correct?
That is a fair statement.
Okay. And thank you for showing the comparisons with the other cities. It looks like, or perhaps you could share what your findings were when you looked at Cupertino with regards to the pursuit of, of full cost recovery. Are we seeing that in our neighboring cities or, or not?
Certainly. Every city, they're in the process of conducting their, their study, or comprehensive rate study. Recently, Mountain View just had one where a lot of their fees doubled. And so, we are not out of, out of the realm by increasing our rates to go to full cost recovery as much as we could. But again, council has the discretion. So, our, what we're charging here, it is in, in line with what other cities are, are, trying, attempting to do. However, their council, based off of the public feedback, could voice different opinions. But council, most, I believe it was June 10th with Mountain View, they approved their, their, their increase in rates. So, again, the link is included, and their fees are doubling, with a lot, most of their fees doubling across the board.
Are we in need of doing, in your estimation, or getting close to the point where we need to be doing another nexus study for some of our fees, perhaps?
That, that would, in terms of the nexus study with the impact fees or the cost recover?
The fee schedule.
The fee schedule, so that's part of the cost recovery policy. We, we shoot about every six to seven years. So, we had one in 2016, we had another one in 2023. So, we'll be, we won't be due for another one for, for, four years or so, four to five years.
Okay, thank you. And with regards to the policy on cost recovery, you know, I can just Google this and, and see, you know, why do cities pursue full cost recovery? And they talk about fiscal responsibility, enhanced efficiency, budgetary stability, transparency and accountability, regulatory compliance, and maximizing revenue opportunities. Are there some other reasons why you want to do full cost recovery? I think of it in terms of fairness, where if someone is getting services from the city and, and you are not asking for those services, should the remainder of the taxpayers, because it's coming out of the general fund, should they be footing the bill over or, and subsidizing the services that they are receiving or not?
It's 100%. So, it becomes an equity issue, right? So, if your neighbor is having a remodel and they're not paying the full cost for that remodel, essentially, it's coming out of your property taxes, your sales taxes in the city.
And then, we have to make choices based on the budget for what we need to reallocate the funding for because that choice was made.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan and Christina. So, I just wanted to restate what the vice mayor said. The cost recovery is, 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 the purpose of the cost recovery is really to make sure that the service that the city provides is fully paid for by the person or persons using that particular service. So, I think in your first slide, you stated what a fee is. Maybe you didn't say what a tax was, but the fee is, is definitely targeted towards someone who uses a particular service. And I also wanted to sort of restate the reason for a full cost recovery. As others have mentioned, if we don't charge someone the full cost of a service, we are subsidizing it, we, meaning the general fund is subsidizing it, in other ways. So, we either, the user pays for it directly for the cost of the service that he or she is getting, or we all pay for something that we don't get any direct benefits for. Am I stating it clearly enough?
That is a correct statement.
Okay. So, having said that, thank you. I, I think it is staff's responsibility to make sure that, that there's the cost of an item and that there's full cost recovery that's laid out in these schedules. And I think, Mayor, we have the discretion to make some changes for that. And I, I'm, I'm looking at your staff report where you said the block leader program, for example, there is no change in that. The, the biannual parking permit doesn't have a cost to it. So, I'm assuming those are choices that the council has made and not that, something that you took upon yourself as staff. Is that right?
That is correct, based off of council decision in the past. So, we're, we're continuing that, that, that train of thought. However, if council wants us to revisit any of these, and I don't expect that to occur, we can certainly increase it. But the, the, the intention, or what this council wants to promote, and say, the block leader, is that, that sense of community, right? And so, this is one of those instances where we want to subsidize so that it is a public benefit. It's less of a private benefit in those instances.
Right. So, overall, I think your summary said that if every, if these increases were implemented, we would, the revenues would increase by about 700,000?
Approximately estimating about 650,000.
650,000. So, so we do have a little bit of a leeway there if we want to make some changes, or if you want to reduce some of the rates, or if we want to point at certain services and say, no, we don't want the full tax, full cost recovery on that. Right? We would still come out ahead.
Certainly. Just, you would then, with cost increasing, the city would still incur that, 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 that cost. However, the revenue that we would receive would be less. So, we would be subsidizing those, those fees, should you choose to do that. So, the revenue would increase, however, costs, or revenues would decrease or not increase as much, however, costs will continue to increase. And so, there will be a subsidization there.
True. So, even, for example, the block leader program, there's a cost associated with it, which the people using the block leader program are not paying.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I, I think I've made my point. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Q, Councilmember one?
I'd just like to make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 25058 approving fiscal year 2025, 26 fee schedules A, B, C, and D.
Moore, second?
Should we vote? Any more comments?
Are there, I was wondering, are there any specific rates that we sort of want to?
Want to adjust?
Want to adjust. I, I was particularly looking at, for example, on Schedule E.
So, you'd like to propose an amendment?
Yes.
An early amendment?
And let me just get to Schedule E just a minute.
If we are, if the council would entertain some adjustment, I am looking at some items where we had a double-digit increase last year. Like the reinspection for violations. Well, that may be okay. But then, the public works staff time, that had a 13.7% increase. And the storm management plan fee. So, when would someone need a storm management plan fee? It's when they renovate. It's when they renovate their home. And because that has a 24% increase last year. And if you are, we are adding another 9.7%. That seems to be a lot. And then we had the flood plan evaluation certificate review, that had a 10.9% increase last year. And then we'll add another 9.7% this year.
Do you have a blanket, do you have a blanket proposal to take double fee increases down to a certain percentage, or you're going line by line?
Some, maybe the ones that where we have increased by more than 10% last year, we don't increase the full 9.7%. So we face in a little bit, yeah. Vice Mayor?
Oh, Mayor, I didn't quite finish.
You found it?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay.
Excuse me. So I was looking at on Schedule A, for example, the bingo permit. Last year, it was 261, this time it's 268. Could we just leave it at 261? It's $7. Won't make or break anyone, but this is a small group of seniors, I'm assuming, who are playing bingo at maybe the senior center or-
I play bingo.
It doesn't seem like a substance.
I play bingo, I don't feel like a senior, but it's okay.
No, all right. So you deserve it too?
All right, maybe. I'll play now.
So that was one, it wasn't going to make a huge difference to anything that we do. And I had a question, and this has nothing to do with anything. What is a dangerous dog annual registration fee?
Do you have a pit bull?
Do we, do we own dangerous dogs? And if I love my dog, would I call it a dangerous dog?
Only if you want to pay a fee.
No, that's okay if we have it. That's fine.
To be frank, I'm not sure. We would have to get back to you on that one. We would have to work with code enforcement likely.
No, but back to the mayor, is there a number, is there an algo that you want to apply here? Like if certain things are double-digit, you want to take it down to a certain percentage? Is that where you're headed?
So here is more example of 72% last year increase, and 17% and 19% increase last year. So, and then 14% increase last year for some of them. So we did increase some quite, oh, there is a 221% increase. What is that? Oh, that's for the major permit. Okay. So we did increase some quite a lot last year. If that's the case, I don't feel comfortable just go full to 100% within a two-year period.
I caution to do general sweeping, changes like that. Usually, when you want to subsidize a particular function, you, it's targeted. So like the crane, the encroachment permit for those cranes, or the parking permits, right? You want to subsidize those because you want to incentivize a certain activity from the public, or not de-incentivize them, right?
So let me ask you, for the, this, that I'm looking at, that change last year, that was a sweeping change, and that we approved. So why we were okay for to do a sweeping change with so such large increase last year? And we just-
Because last year, the the thought process was to bring us to full cost recovery, and that's what we've done across the board. However-
However, the policy does not say it has to be full cost recovery. It's only for Schedule A, it's full cost recovery. Schedule B is 75% to 100%. And as I stated, the category that needs full cost recovery, or even 70, 81%, some of those that I see don't meet that specification. I don't think we are following our policy.
So-
I'm very concerned about we not following policy and just go 100% full recovery in all of those items in Schedule B, when this is our policy, it's 75% to 100%.
You can certainly interpret the policy in different ways, at the individual fee level or across the department, right?
I, I don't see the policy as across the department, and we need to reach that. Because the policy clearly says it's at the individual fee level, but it talks about whether it's an individual service, impact individual or not. And never in this policy says we want to reach a certain target. Yeah, so I guess we don't have time to keep on this. So I will make substitute motion, I will see if my, the council members will entertain. I hope to bring this item back, to adjust it, so that we don't, for those items especially, we have increased more than 20% last year, I think more than 15% last year. We should come, I hope the staff come back with more gentle approach of achieving maybe the goal for recovery. We know that in the past two years, many people, for many people, this has been hard and in multiple areas. And we are seeing the tariff increase also. And now we are just adding another, we are just all of a sudden decide, we want full recovery no matter what. That doesn't seem sensible. Yes, we don't want to subsidize things, but then we do need to consider, is this the right approach at this time? So my motion is to direct staff to come back, to look at the, compare the increase from last year and this year, and, and propose a more gentle gradual increase. Maybe you can propose this year, this percentage, and next year. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Yeah. So any comment?
I just want a point of clarification. You're proposing that we essentially continue this item until a later date? Or are you proposing that we adopt now and bring it back at a later time for change?
Continue to a later date.
Okay, because I would be willing to support reexamining it later. I'm not going to support kicking this can down the road further right now.
What do you mean?
So there are a number of fees that I think are worthy of our looking at, and I think that we should be looking at them on a, on an individual level. Some of them, so for example, there was some, some commentary about the bingo fee. As far as I know, I think it's like two churches that that apply for this, and that's about it. So if we dropped it to nothing, it would probably make no difference. But there are other fees that would make a big difference, and we might want to examine what exactly the the trade-off is that we're trying to achieve here, right? Because at the end of the day, the question is, what do we want to subsidize? What is it that we're trying to incentivize by reducing the fee? So I'm okay with us reexamining that later. Right now, I think we have a well-thought-out fee schedule in front of us. We should adopt it, and we can direct staff to come back at a later time with thoughts on what things we might want to change.
How about, I think most of the increase is in Schedule B, which has huge increase last year, and then we are doing another. So how about we adopt the staff recommendation, accept Schedule B, and then bring Schedule B back with adjusted recommendation? Would that be acceptable?
No. I think it would make the most sense for us to look at these on a, on a per fee basis and to say, to ask ourselves, i- is this something we want to subsidize? Is it not something we want to subsidize?
Yeah, that's why I think we should bring that back for, I would like staff recommendation on those, and we can have more discussion on that.
I'm just telling you what I'm willing to support. I'm willing to support adopting it now and bringing it back later for additional adjustment based upon the precepts that I just described.
I think adjusting, adopting now and then adjusting means we are changing it back and forth. That doesn't seem to make, make sense. Okay, so I will modify my motion to be that we adopt the staff recommendation, accept Schedule B, and bring Schedule B back. So with some staff recommendation, we follow the policy on whether we do full recovery or not, and also take into considering, consideration of what increase would have been made the last year. So I think that we should just-
Can I make a quick comment, Mayor? These fees will become effective September 1st, 2025. So the longer we delay, the, the effective date gets pushed.
September 1st, so that means if we consider it July 15, is still okay?
That's what I was going to say, is the implementation is 60 days after you adopt. So if you adopt this fee schedule now, and then we can come back for questions on specific items, we can do that.
Because there will be a revenue impact the longer we put it on.
But if we increase that now, and then two months later, we do, we change the fee again, wouldn't that make implementation very hard? You keep changing, you have to change all the documents.
If, if the idea is that, you know, that we're adopting the fee schedule now, but we're not, I don't know if we're, if you're suggesting we change all of the schedules? Or is it mostly looking at it line by line on your own, and then suggesting that staff can bring updates if necessary, or bring back for discussion if necessary?
Yeah, I think the mostly Schedule B. I don't plan, I'm hoping the staff can give some recommendation. I don't plan to go through them one by one and make my own recommendation.
Let me ask my staff how that might work if we adopt everything except Schedule B today.
I am unsure how, I would have to defer to the city attorney's office, I'm not, or even the city clerk's office, how that would impact the noticing requirements. This caused an issue last time we brought this in early May, that due to the, the noticing requirements, we had to renotice this item and then waited an additional month after that, that, in order to get it for the September meeting. However, if we adopt three of the four schedules, I'm not sure how Schedule B would fall in with that noticing requirements. If we would have to renotice or with-
If you're making changes to Schedule B, you would have to renotice that schedule, but I don't think you would have to notice everything. You could pass a portion now.
Okay, so then we would have-
I would just add my bigger concern would be related to workload in the department, so we're not getting precise direction in terms of what fees to go look at, which means we'd have to go look at every fee, analyze it, like look at what other jurisdictions are doing, look back at the fee study that happened. That's going to be quite a bit of work.
It's only looking at Schedule B, and looking at the increase from last year, and to make so that we don't increase something by 20% last year, then another 10% this year, when we are in an economical recovery time, when everyone is already going through a tough time.
And, and just to be clear, the increase that occurred last year was primarily related to the fee study that went and looked at the cost of providing each service. In the in-between years from 2016 to 2023, we were simply using CPI or the change in labor. So what the fees, why the fees went up dramatically last year is similar to what we're seeing in Mountain View, is they're doing a time-in-motion study, figuring out how much each fee costs. This year, they're going up in addition to, because we're in the in-between, and we're looking at CPI, or the construction CPI, or the cost of labor. So that's kind of the differentiation between the two. One is kind of just catching up to anything we may have missed in those increases in the in-between years. That could be a change in process, it could be a change in staff, and then on a go-forward basis, is just doing the, the update. So we, we could certainly go look at, but I can tell you, likely, the bulk of that is related to the cost of providing the services.
So how about we adopt the staff recommendation on all the schedules except B, and for B, we increase that by the CPI?
That would be at the council's discretion.
Okay, so that would be my motion, and then we can review Schedule B later. So, yeah.
Do you need a second?
So that's my motion, yeah.
I'll provide you a second.
Thank you, thank you. And let's vote. Oh, Vice Mayor, you have a-
Thank you. So just as a reminder, our sales tax revenue peaked around $42 million, and it is now down to $10 million. This is part of why we have the full cost recovery happening. I don't agree with the idea to piecemeal, remove some of these to provide subsidies for engineering fees. I just simply don't agree with that. I believe in full cost recovery. It helps with our financial and fiscal responsibility when we're doing our budgeting. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that Mountain View has really looked into their fees to make sure that they are accurate, and as we know, that they cannot charge more than the actual cost. So, you know, I think philosophically, you either believe in the full cost recovery, that if someone is getting engineering services from the city, that they pay for it, or you don't believe in that philosophy, and you think that individuals should be subsidized for special services which they are receiving. So have to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'd like to emphasize, I believe in following the adopted policy, which did not say we want full recovery for everything. And I believe in giving our residents, in, we are, Schedule B, we are going to increase by CPI, which according to the fee study, this is what we are supposed to do every year. And without doing a fee study, and now say we want to increase another 10%, really does not follow our policy. That's my comment. So, but, Councilmember Wong?
My, my challenge with Schedule B is because we outsource a lot of the work, and it's going out to a lot of consultants. I know there's a fee on our end, but we really have to find cheaper ways to do things. And so if you're focused on trying to go for full cost recovery, we also figure out how to actually reduce our cost structure in that area. I don't know how those two things mesh. That's why I'm interested in trying to look at Schedule B more than, more than the other areas. I mean, you guys have done a great job trying to come up with the numbers and match those labor costs. It's just that the, the ones in Schedule B are a little bit more extreme.
Okay, I think we should vote.
Just to be clear, Rand, this motion is on the twice-modified substitute motion?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay. Accepted by Councilmember Wong.
Yeah.
Motion fails with Wong and Chow voting yes.
Okay, now we go back to the first motion. Is with a friendly, is a friendly amendment accepted by the mover? No, about the bingo fee?
Pardon, actually, no on the bingo fee. That's in the Cupertino municipal code, and there are a number of steps that are supposed to be followed by the, the city. And it hasn't, in my opinion, always been followed, and it does have a cost to it.
Okay, so then, should we just vote?
And this is the main motion to adopt the staff recommendation as presented? Okay, thank you. The motion carries with Wong and Chow voting no.
Okay, and now we go to the Finch property. It's already 10 o'clock.
Pardon, through the, before you begin on this item, I received formal, I requested and received formal, a formal advice letter from the FPPC regarding the Finch property, and I, I live very close to it, and so I will be recusing on this item.
Okay, do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Mayor, we have a short presentation if we want, and also have a staff report, and Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works, will take this item. And I just want to provide a correction- Um and I just wanna provide a a correction in the recommended action and the subject for this item. It mentions Cupertino Unified School District. I just wanna mention it is Cupertino Uni- Union School District, so.
All right.
And apologies for that here.
Hello, Council, Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. Uh Tina, thank you for clarifying that, and thank you, Lisa Warren, for bringing that up. I'm glad we can get that clarified. Tonight, we're talking about uh ten four eighty Finch Avenue, um which is located over in the Rancho Rincanata area. Um tonight's action is to appoint a negotiator uh for the potential purchase of that property, uh which is owned by Cupertino Union School District. The school district bought the, you know, purchased the property in twenty sixteen for approximately five point four million dollars. Uh the property did have various chemicals on it, and the property has been remediated. Um I was able to verify that after the presentation, or after uh um the staff, previous staff reports were published. Uh the property is approximately one point acres, uh is roughly square in shape and is currently vacant. And it is located adjacent to elementary schools, I said, and the city has been made aware that the district may be interested in selling the property to the city. Don't know why. There you go. Uh the city has historically had an interest in buying the property to create a park. Um if the city council were to purchase the property for park purposes, there is currently approximately thirteen point two million dollars in the Park and Lou funds that could be used towards the purchase of the property. At this time, the city needs for council to appoint negotiators for the potential purchase in order to initiate the effort. Um if council does appoint negotiators tonight, that will start the effort to gather information. Uh the largest square, uh the largest property in the middle of the map is the property in question. It is situated along Phil Lane, east of Miller Avenue, west of Tantow, south of Stevens Creek Boulevard. Uh the larger property to the east and south is Sedgwick Elementary. Here is the the same view with uh the addition of aerial photography. And here is a close-up of the property. As can be seen, the property is devoid of any structures, except for a fence along the perimeter. There are a handful of trees within and along the perimeter of the property. Uh these trees have not been uh yet assessed for their health. Um if council decides to proceed, the next steps would include ordering a title report, a preliminary site assessment, and having an appraisal uh an appraisal prepared. Once that information is gathered, we will return to city council in a closed session to discuss the next steps. We anticipate the timing of that could be as early as September. So again, uh tonight's action, we're requesting that city council appoint a negotiator for the potential purchase of the property. And I'm here to ask, answer any questions that I may be able to answer.
Thank you, um thank you, City Manager, for taking the lead on this uh issue, this uh item. Um any questions from the council members?
I had a question, Mayor.
Yeah.
On on your slide, you stated that the school district may be interested in selling, uh and there was something in quotes, either selling or may or.
Yeah, um so the school district has indicated interest in disposing of the property. Uh it wouldn't be your typical uh purchase and sale, and maybe the city attorney could add additional information in there as she was in the meeting with the school district on the process, but it's a slightly different process.
Okay, so we've had some clear indication then from the school district that they are interested in in the prospect of selling to us?
There was a meeting, and they had indicated that they were interested in having discussions with us about the potential, their sale, our purchase of the property.
City Manager, you have some more information?
No, that's, I was just going to say the same thing, that the school has, you know, we've we're, we've been in touch with the school. Um there's obviously no concrete conversations about the sale, because this step is needed first uh from council, the direction that, yeah, you're appointing a negotiator to start those um you know, in-depth conversations. Um however, there is indication that the school would like to engage with us. Um after we we get this direction from council, we'll get to that step.
Yeah, maybe I can supplement. I spoke to the board president of Cupertino Union, and so they have every six months, they do a review of all the property that they have and decide what to do. And then uh in January this year, and they their review, they decided that they would like to do a property exchange. What that means is they would like to exchange the property for um a revenue generating option, rather than just getting cash for it. And then, but they have done that for the the other property uh near the Stevens Creek Reservoir. Uh what the name escapes me, so they have done that before. The exchange means they they already engaged with a consultant who will help facilitate that. And we would engage in the first portion of the exchange, which means there was um they would be selling the property to us. And then they will use the proceed to invest in another revenue generating thing, which could be per real property, it just could be something else. The idea for them is they don't want the funding just goes into the general fund. They want it to be uh something they can hold down and generate revenue. But to us, we don't really need to care about how step three or two or three happens. And so they have been have, they have had this intention to sell this property uh in this kind of manner, which they have done in another property before. They have been, they have the opportunity to approach other people to sell it, but then they really is prefer to, for the city to do that. That's why they have been waiting since January.
Okay, so then as far as we're concerned, it is a direct sale. They sell to us.
Yeah, as far as our concern, yeah.
Okay, so the exchange is not applicable.
Um yeah, we don't have, really have to care about that, but that was confusing at first. Yeah.
Okay, that that was my only question, and if uh if you've heard directly from the school that they are in a school district that they're interested in selling, I'm okay with the city, interim city manager and the.
City Attorney, you have anything to add?
Uh just that once um we, uh if the council passes this, then we'll move into a due diligence phase where we will um be able to uh further review the environmental um situation at the property. I understand that the Public Works Director has uh information about that. It sounds like the property's been cleaned up, but we would want our lawyers to look at that, and um and then we would negotiate a sale.
And then we won't have a decision on whether the price is good or not until we see.
So at this point, we're pretty clear that this uh school district wants to sell to us?
I would. Um I I, yeah, I I wouldn't say that statement. I would say that, you know, we are going to engage with the school to start those kinds of conversations, right? It would be difficult to say, right, that they will sell it to us.
Maybe their price is not good, they decide not to sell, right? We don't know. If they're interested in the conversation.
And when are they discussing it at their board? With their board?
Uh from what we understand, it 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 will be an agenda item for them sometime in September. Is that correct, Chad?
That's correct.
Yeah, we initially agendized it in June, so they agendized it in June right after us. We postponed because of the FPPC conflict, so they postponed, and now they postponed that to September. So they are really uh hoping to work with us, yeah. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna clarify that when we met with Stacy L., Vice Mayor Moore and I, about the fireworks and the location to do fireworks, they also indicated that they are interested in a sale. They didn't say to whom, but they were interested in a sale, and that they would have a preference to do just to sell that property to do what you're talking about, a leg-leg exchange. So we've heard it directly from multiple sources. So what we heard in the past might not necessarily have been as clear, uh but it is, it is true that they are looking to sell.
Yeah. Okay, should we go to public comment? The Councilmember for one?
Yeah, just one thing that uh I did want to raise in having reviewed um AB one thirty this morning, is that it does change an exemption that is available to school districts for the Surplus Lands Act. Um and so you might want to, just as part of your examination and due diligence, ensure that that doesn't interfere in any way, and if they don't, you know, have to go back through a process. I don't think that it does, but I haven't had a chance to examine it in any detail.
Yeah, I think I did ask whether they need to do anything with the Surplus Land Act at the time. They said then there is, they don't need anything, but if there is a law change, then. Okay, so let's go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak from Community Hall, Lisa Warren and Jennifer Griffin, and I see one request virtually. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I was at the August twenty-second board meeting of the school district and heard before options that a consultant was giving them on what they could do with this property to come to the goal they wanted to. And there is a preference from the board to sell it, and in my impression is to sell it to the city. So I'm just putting that in there, and I've had conversations with others. So the longtime landowner, farmer, rancher in our city, Mrs. Pastoreno, wanted her family home site to be used for the community as a whole. The original her, where the home sat, where she raised her kids, it used to be part of a much bigger land mass, and it was a ranch and farm. They grew tomatoes. I have a label from their canning. Then, the point being, they sold off the land to the city or the county, it was county then. Um and I think they may have, don't quote me, done something special about the school site as in the deal. So she wanted to be used, she wanted it to be used as a community as a whole. Her heirs reached out to CUSD to discuss the possibility of having the district purchase the property. This was in two thousand twenty-four that this became public. The home and land were never on MLS. No one else was given the opportunity to purchase this. This is how badly I think that her heirs wanted to honor her request. It took a couple of years for CUSD to actually make it happen, and then it happened. We now, as a city, have the opportunity to do a few great things. We can honor the longtime landowner's wish of having the site serve local families, including children. We can make good use of existing Park and Lou fees in an area of the city that, for a very long time, has not met the city's stated goals for adequate parkland. We can provide a nature garden that is a goal for the city. The specific plan for the Memorial Park includes an asset such as this. But that location is not a realistic goal at this point. Well, ten four eighty Finch Avenue is a perfect place to meet that goal. And it's a lower cost in most parks. And much needed. We can avoid a completely inappropriate use of the site, such as a very high-density housing project, which is an option presented by the consultants to the school board that was not popular among the entire board. Purchasing the Finch site is the right thing to do. We have existing Park and Lou fees to do so, and as seen with the public hearing, item number twelve tonight, there will be more and more Park and Lou fees coming.
Next, we have Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I am so relieved that this item has finally come, that we're making a committee. I have been, I was at the meeting several times when CUSD was discussing the sale of this, et cetera, et cetera. I pointed out to them if they attempted to put in high-density housing. This is one half mile into the neighborhood on all sides. Rancho Rincanata is huge. It's a mile in diameter. There are fifteen hundred homes in there. This is a perfect place for a park. It is adjacent to Sedgwick. It has a giant, healthy, probably one-hundred-year-old redwood tree on the property, which was adjacent to the home, lovely home that was there for many, many years, was probably Mrs. Pastorene's, as the previous speaker said. The home was well-maintained, the tree was healthy. I have lived in that neighborhood for eons, and we have been looking at that tree constantly. Also, if somebody attempted to put in high-density housing, they would have to, they would have to try to take the tree down. I don't think the city would let them do that. My brother has a eighteen ninety-two Victorian in downtown Los Gatos, and it has a redwood tree of a similar vintage. I suspect that that tree was planted in nineteen hundred. Mrs. Pastorene may have had a previous farmhouse on that property, and I suspect that the tree was planted then. It has been a battle to get any parks in Rancho Rincanata. We have fought tooth and nail to get anything. Even Sterling Barnhart started out as the water tank property when we were in the county. It is, I believe, less than half an acre. I think it's a quarter acre. Then we got Lawrence Mitty. That was a multi-year project, uh and it it will eventually get um finished. But I think that all of this is an investment in the future. This is a perfect viewing place for our Fourth of July. Uh you know, Friday, you guys are having uh fireworks again, and what did it say in the email today from the city? You can watch them from Sedgwick Park. You can watch them from the Pastorene Park. I'm gonna name it that, the Finch Pastorene Park. We could do that. It's an acre and a half. There's a lot of room. If it does not suit to purchase all of it, give the city half of it and the other half to Sedgwick. We have the money. Let's use it wisely and honor this dear lady. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually, Sam R. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and Councilmembers. Uh I do not support this uh this vote to authorize the city manager, and the reason for that being that I think uh you need to first study the options for land available for acquisition by the city. And before you can move forward, and firstly, I wanna say this should not have been on consent calendar, so thank you for pulling it. And and it was horrifying to see this on consent calendar, because on past occasions, some of you have criticized the prior council majority for having put real estate acquisitions on consent calendar, and and residents have joined you in that effort. And so to see the same now, to put this on consent calendar, is uh is is basically raising the question, what is the difference here? So so this should not have been consent, first of all. Secondly, I'd like you to first do a study session on the options available for acquisition of parkland. The Monobello land could have been acquired and uh could have been an annexation from the county. And that would have been a far cheaper acquisition if you had acted on that sooner. There's plenty of county land, and as you've heard from residents, county land is actually a huge fire risk for the community. And so there's plenty of county land that you can look to annex and convert into park at a much cheaper cost, giving much larger acreage, and perhaps a much more scenic extension of what we have today at Rancho San Antonio. And so whether it be in the Modern Vista South neighborhood, or the Crest neighborhood, or the Inspiration Heights neighborhood, you have many choices. I'd like to ask you to do a study session first on those choices. It may be county land that is adjacent to city property. It may be options to annex from the county. But if it is cheaper, then that is a greater value for our Parks and Lou fees. So just because we have the money doesn't mean we spend it in the heart of the city where CUSD paid five point, what, five point six million in twenty sixteen. They're surely gonna expect much more for that, and we shouldn't be spending. Secondly, this is really close to Creekside Park, and I'm here at this property uh, you know, every week, because I take classic Creekside Park, and there's no shade at Creekside Park, so I I head out to Sedgwick. I park at Sedgwick for shade, while my kid is in classic Creekside Park. And I can tell you, this property is really close to Creekside Park. So we have Creekside Park on the west. We have Lawrence uh Mitty coming up on the east. We have the Sterling Barnhart on the east, and so it's it's definitely we have the Sterling Barnhart on the east, and so it's, it's definitely useful and a good idea, but I think you should think about the biggest bang for the buck for the Park in Lufy's, and that comes with evaluating all of the options, including county land. And annexing county land is a huge win for the city because it expands our quality of life by being able to take advantage of parks that are much larger and much more scenic out in the hillside, giving us extensions to Ranch of San Antonio. And lastly, you should do this for the right reasons. So please do not rush this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Thank you. So, yeah, I initially wish we have a discussion on this, but then we, I, I think the big difference is on this agenda item, the agenda packet has a lot of information about this property, rather than on consent with almost no information. And then, yeah. So I would like to then make a, should we have a motion, or does everyone have some, would like to make some comment?
For the sake of starting the commentary, I'll make the motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, any comment?
My comment is to address the, some of the callers and the speakers here. The east side has had a park deficit, and that park deficit is well-known. And if you look at the density of parks that are available on the west side versus the east side, it's a huge difference. An aerial map will pretty much show you that that's the issue. So any land that comes available for parks has always been a priority as, as part of the east side and part of the annexation of Rancha Rinconada. I think there were some promises that were made. And so I would, I would fully support the beginning of the conversation. I hope that the land has been cleaned up. I hope that safety measures are there. There's a lot of due diligence that has to happen before we approve that, and, and I think that was, I think, a commitment made to the east side at some point, I think during the annexation.
Councilmember for...
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that we're very much at the very beginning of this process. This is far from, from being complete. We're not authorizing a purchase today, we're authorizing the beginning of a conversation. And I think we need to be able to have that if we want to find out if this is going to work for us. One of the things I'll caution us all about is, is just that, you know, it's not just a matter of acquiring the land, you then have to build a park. And we've seen what some of those costs look like in the course of developing the, the plan to redevelop Memorial Park. Really significant, relatively small amounts of land, so that's something that we'll have to be, you know, keeping our, our minds on. In addition, I would agree with, with Councilmember Wong, the placement of a park matters a lot. There are, there's a lot of open space on the, the western edge of the city. We, we had MidPenn out here earlier today to give us a presentation on what they do. There's a lot that you can do if you're that far west, but there are parts of the city that have just historically not had the number of parks built because they sat in county land for a very long time. The same is true for parts of our neighboring cities. They just don't have as many parks per the number of residents who are there. So if we've got an opportunity to pick something up, even if it's not a perfect location, if it's a really good one, I think we should at least explore it, and I think that this is a good location. So I'm, I'm happy to see us at least taking this step.
Yeah, thank you. Here, I'd like to share, this is a Google map of the Rancha Rinconada area. The most of the green that you see are, there is Cupertino High up north, and then Hyde. And the entire area of Rancha Rinconada has no park. Even along, even the Sterling, Sterling Barnhart Park, you can't even see it because it's so tiny. It's like the size of one house. And, yeah, Creekside Park is there, but that also serves a lot of the other area. So this is a unique, maybe the only opportunity for this area to get a small park. And in terms of cost, it depends on how, what stuff we pack into it. Memorial Park plan, just pack too much stuff in it, maybe that's why it's so expensive. This could be a low-key park that's just a green space, then it's not as expensive to develop. But, yeah, before seeing the number, we can make a decision. Should, Councilmember Wong?
Sure, I, I just wanted to echo what you said, Mayor. This is the first time we are talking about this at, at council level. And, and, and as everyone's rightly pointed out, this is the first step in ongoing negotiations, if, if, if that's the way it's going to pan out. But I'm also assuming that there will be several more opportunities to decide if this is the best use for our Park in Lou funding, you know? And I'm hoping there will be other opportunities to actually look at maybe some other options which, which may give us a sort of better bang for our buck than, than purchasing the Finch property.
Yeah, okay, so should we vote? It's already 10:30. Councilmember Wong, you have a short comment, or, okay, let's vote.
Please vote.
Let's vote.
The motion carries with more abstaining, absent abstaining.
Okay. Now, item 14, the internal audit work...
Mayor, would you like to take a vote?
Oh, we need to take a vote to take another item. It's after 10:30.
Start a new item, yes, we do.
Can I make a motion that we try to do 14 and 15 today?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. So the motion is we will continue the meeting to finish item 14 and 15. Is me? Sorry. Oh, may I have a second to continue the meeting to finish item 14 and 15?
I think a second.
A second, okay, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, then...
Mayor, I'm very sorry. I read the vote incorrectly for Finch, item eight. The motion carried with more recused, not abstaining.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Apologies.
Okay, city manager.
Thanks, Mayor. So this is the fiscal year 2025-26 internal audit work plan, and we have Moss Adams and also administrative service department staff. Moss Adams serves as the designated internal auditor for the city, and they will be leading us through this conversation today. With that, I will turn it over to Colleen.
And I'll turn it over to Colleen Rosellis with Moss Adams, I believe, now officially Baker Tilly. And, Kristen, if you don't mind putting the presentation up.
Yes, just one moment. Okay, you should be able to see the screen momentarily.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Colleen Rosellis, I am a managing principal with Baker Tilly. If you haven't kept up on the exciting accounting industry news, Moss Adams and Baker Tilly merged last month, and so still the same team, still the same folks, but we're going by a new name. I'm also joined by my colleague Chelsea Ritchie, who's a director on our team, and she'll be providing a little bit of this presentation as well. Oh, yeah, next slide, please. So just a reminder that we've been retained by the city to serve as the city's internal auditor. We report to you through the Audit Committee, and we provide internal audit and performance audit services, really with the goal of making the city more effective, providing better public service. We do all of our work under accounting industry standards, primarily for you, those are government auditing standards, and then standards for consulting work under the Association of Certified Public Accountants. And what that really means is everything that we do has to have adequate and appropriate evidence. Nothing is based just on opinion. We really want to bring things that are grounded in fact and that recommendations are practical. So on the next slide, we have just a quick overview of what the internal audit plan tries to address. We've been your auditor since 2020, and over that time, we've tried to address the highest risk areas that impact the city. And we really take, try to take a balanced approach between those areas of compliance, risk, and performance and controls. And so you will see over time, as we perform our work, we try to kind of make our rounds around departments, but we also want to make our rounds in terms of balancing between performance and controls. On the next slide, we have a summary of our enterprise risk assessment results. We delivered this risk assessment last year. We conduct them just about every three years. We look at about 20 areas across the city, their cross-cutting functions that tell us where the city has risk and how we want to focus our time and energy, as well as give management an opportunity to focus limited resources in terms of improving performance and reducing risk. And so you'll see that risk in general, when we did this point-in-time assessment last year, was primarily driven by the city's financial situation. And that risk has, you know, pretty much continued. The city's in a better financial position than it was a year ago, but there still are challenges related to being able to deliver all the service that you want, just based on where the city is financially. And that really puts you in the same bucket as pretty much every other city in California, so you're, you're not alone, but it is a challenge to accomplish everything that you want. So when we develop our internal audit work program, we get input from Audit Committee members, input from staff, as well as referring back to the risk assessment to help to decide what we want to do. And Chelsea is going to go over the next couple of slides virtually for you.
Yes, thank you so much, Colleen. So we did, you know, like as Colleen mentioned, you know, there's been so much that has come out of the internal audit program since we started in 2020, and so we wanted to highlight a few of those aspects for you here. So we have completed two enterprise risk assessments as our time as the internal auditor. We've also completed both internal control projects as well as performance and efficiency projects, nine in total. We have reviewed over 139 policies for the city, and we've provided 52 recommendations from those projects and enterprise risk assessments. And I think it's important to highlight that we've also started validating those recommendations, and that started in fiscal year '25. And we've already been able to validate that 45 of our recommendations have gone through, which is really remarkable and shows that the city is really committed to the work of the internal audit function. We also help manage the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, so the ethics hotline reported. There's been 33 reports, and we provide those to certain city personnel that, you know, need to take care of those reports as they come in. So going to the next slide here, you know, as Colleen mentioned, there's lots of different inputs into what makes our fiscal year internal audit plan, you know, talking to council members, talking with city staff, as well as what comes out of that enterprise risk assessment. So today, what we are presenting to you is four, I guess really three projects with, along with our ongoing internal audit services, which really means what we're doing today, as well as attending those audit committees. We also meet with management staff monthly to discuss all the ongoing projects, as well as the overall monitoring of that fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. But the other three projects that we have outlined here, one, the council-wide policy review inventory, we already talked about this before with you all, this has already been approved by the city council, but this is really making sure to be reviewing those council policies, providing those recommendations with best practices. The second project is the citywide internal control review. So this is really looking at, you know, the city as a whole and the internal controls that really are important to making sure that we are protecting city assets and resources. So looking at those internal controls, providing best, you know, practice recommendations, as well as really providing an outline of high to low risk in those internal controls. And then the other project that we have here for you today is the investment and cash flow policy review and recommendation. So we're really reviewing this and providing best practice recommendations over the city's investment and cash flow policy. I know that's a lot. We welcome, we welcome questions.
Anyone has questions? Maybe we should go to public comment first?
Yes, Mayor, I currently see no requests for this item, to speak for this item.
Okay, great. So thank you. I'm really glad to see that you will be looking at the cash flow policy, and I think we really need to take a look at that. Since I did that comparison with other cities, and I see that they are keeping about, at the time, about $2 to $5 million in cash, when we were keeping $20 million or $60 million in cash, and about 20%, 15% to 20% for us, about 2% to 5% for them. So maybe it has improved, but then if we can review the policy, that would be great. And then in terms of the council review policy, I am curious what policy you would review, but I would recommend that maybe you can look at grant application policy, because we don't have that policy right now. And I see that Sunnyvale has a policy on when, before a grant application is submitted, if it's significant, it will come to the council for approval first, and especially when there is city matching funding. I think we sometimes do that, sometimes we don't. And we ended up with council hands being tied because the project already has funding, when that funding could have used, be used for other projects also. So, and then another policy I, I think we don't have also is approval process for a CIP project after it's added to the CIP plan in the budget session. So we have seen in the past, a project is added as one of the 10 projects, for example, in CIP. The next time we see the project is a contract approval. But then, an example is the Enzaba Ford bike lane, so that we don't, we didn't see the design, the plan, but then it's already a contract. And we didn't even know, for example, sometimes the, the contract include intersection change or signal change. So if we can have, but some, some projects like a Parkmaster plan would have a design that come to the council for approval. So there is different practice for different projects. So if we can have policy that clarify the process, that would be great. Anyone else have any comments? No? Okay, so should we, if that's the case, we can, Vice Mayor.
So we didn't have any, any public comments, but I want to thank you for the report and the suggestions, and I appreciate that we're continuing kind of a total quality management process improvement each time, and that it's, I think it's been a very positive experience, and it's been really good for the city. And, and I, I like that the, the reports are viewed very, in a much more positive light than when, when we first saw them and they were kind of being used politically. But now we've moved beyond that, and we're looking at it as, as something really positive for the city, which it is. I do want to point out that Chair Schmidt from the Audit Committee is here. Thank you for, for attending, and I, I know that that's part of the policy. But I do want to mention that we, it is getting late, and we do already have two Audit Committee members who've already been to the, the meeting to discuss this, this topic. So I'm just wondering if we want to...
Should we have a motion? Maybe we should have a motion to... Maybe we should have a motion to accept the internal audit work plan?
Yes, I move the, I move the recommended action. And I also hope that we will consider our policy on requiring that the Audit Committee, specifically the Audit Committee Chair, be in attendance, since we have two others, and we are keeping him out rather, rather late on our behalf.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, council member Mohan?
No, no, I just wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Go for it, you can take it.
Any comment? If not, then we'll just vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Then we go to item 15, which is the second, well, introduce the municipal code amendment. Oh, we had, because we had the first reading, and by the way, made some modification to the EDC committee composition. And so this is just modified. Oh, yeah, so this is a municipal code for the Economic Development Committee. So do I have any staff presentation or just our report?
Thank you, Mayor. No staff presentation. This is an, this is an oral report, and our city clerk, Kirsten Scorsia, will take this item.
Oh, great.
Yes, so this, this just, this pertains to amendments to the Muni Code regarding the composition, composition and member terms for the Economic Development Committee. If you recall, council initially considered these amendments on June 17th and directed staff to return with a new first reading. The amendments would include replacing one council member represent, as representative on the EDC, with a representative from the Planning Commission. And that would be in addition to the Sustainability Commission and the Technology Information and Communication Commission. And additionally, the term lengths would be shortened to one year for commissioners and council members. This would allow the terms to align with the commissioner, respective commission and council member offices. And lastly, it would clarify the term lengths for the industry sector representatives to stagger the first terms for two representatives to four years, and then two years for, for the other two industry sector representatives. So if council approves these, approves this, these amendments, then a second reading would come back on July 15, and then adoption would occur 30 days later.
And also, we need to appoint one council member to the committee?
Yes.
Maybe on the 15th?
Correct.
So any public comment?
Mayor, I have no request to speak on this item.
Okay. So bring it back to the council. Anyone would like to make a motion?
I have one comment. I still think this committee is so huge, it should really be less than like five. I find it extremely cumbersome. It's a big committee. It's going to work really, really slow. You're going to get a lot of great input, but I just think it's such a big committee. I'm for an economic development committee, but I just think this is way too cumbersome.
Mayor, just for clarification, we had already voted on the composition of the committee, right? This is just to amend the Muni Code, Municipal Code?
That is correct, Councilmember Mohan. The EDC was already established in April, and this, these were just minor amendments to the membership.
Much later than that was, I thought, the last meeting where we actually discussed the composition.
The last meeting on June 17th was to discuss, discuss these amendments that are before you today.
That was the first reading, but because we made modifications, we need to do another first reading. So this is the first reading of the modification we made from last time.
Yes, because the changes were substantial from the first reading, the staff is bringing back a new first reading with the changes that council specified on June 17.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Basically, last time we gave direction to change it.
Yes.
I guess for, also for public information, the city clerk, could you clarify the recruiting process right now? The deadline is July 7?
Yes, the recruitment period is currently open for the technology, for the industry sector members, and it is open until Monday, July 7 at 10:00 a.m. The, anyone wishing to apply can go to the city website under commissions slash vacancies. They can contact the city clerk, and we can direct them and complete the online application.
Yeah, just Google Cupertino Commission vacancies, that work. And we do have opening for public safety and housing also.
Yes, and there are, there, yes, there are five industry sector representatives that the city is seeking to fill, and then they, there are two vacancies on Public Safety and Housing Commission.
And Vice Mayor?
I move that the clerk read the title of ordinance number 25-2273, that further reading of the ordinance be waived, and that the city council conduct the first reading of the ordinance by title only, and also that we find that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA.
Second.
Okay, I do have a question that it seems for some industry sectors, the applicant, there are not a lot of applicants. So with the current code, would the council have the discretion to appoint not exactly one from every industry sector?
I would recommend that the council follows the code as was adopted by the council.
Then it will have to be like one from each sector that's indicated there.
That is correct, Mayor.
Yeah. Then if we don't have qualified candidate for that sector, that will put us, we would have to like go out and recruit again?
The recruitment would need to remain open until filled, and so staff would, would continue to push out notifications to the public.
Point of inquiry through the mayor to the clerk, is there a quorum that we have to have, a certain number?
Yes, the, so the quorum, so the current membership is five, nine, so five would be a quorum.
Okay, so long we have five people, it's okay. If those positions aren't filled, we could still function.
So I believe the legislative body would need to be appointed as a whole, as specified, outlined in the municipal code. So that would, that would, yeah.
Any more questions? So what industry sectors we still need applicants right now?
All industry sectors, there, we have five applicants from the technology sector, though. So all other industry sectors are...
And what are, okay, what are they?
Yeah, are lacking.
Okay. Thank you. Let's vote, yeah.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, it's 10:53. Then we will adjourn the meeting.
No, no RV?